Tonight, I would like to have Commissioner Hoffman, leaders in the community, and Commissioner Ashbrook say a prayer for us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heads. Lord, please watch over the commission tonight as it does the work of the city. Please help us to do what is always best in the best interest of the community and our constituents. In your name we pray. Amen.
I'm going to call this meeting the Portman County City Commission Board. We've got first thing is consent agendas, and I'd like to do these separately as far as the special meeting on 5/11 and the regular meeting on 5/15. If anybody had a chance to look through that, that's very lengthy.
Mayor, I'll be honest, I looked through briefly. I did not read through every bit of it. There has, I did see some grammatical errors in some people's names that weren't correct, but I didn't really see anything that changed the content.
I agree. I see some errors as well, but guys, I'm just ready to move forward, move past that for this board and Mr. Anderson and just move on. We've passed that, and that's the way I feel about that.
Any other comments?
No motion. I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion to approve, Commissioner Ashbrook.
I'll second.
Second to my Commissioner Lowry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes as five a. All right, now we've got the regular meeting on 7/17 and the workshop meeting on 7/17.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion, Commissioner Ashbrook.
Settle.
Second to Commissioner Lowry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, five a. All right. Fort Worth redevelopment, this bill, we're going on.
Mayor, the only thing we can make a report on. Only up there we have is the work on Reed Avenue has been delayed due to rain. Should be starting Wednesday night next week.
Sorry, can I jump in on that?
Jump.
It sounded like they weren't going to be on there until Thursday as of today, and so what I talked to them about was let's don't start on a Thursday. That seemed like a bad weekday of the week to start and the weekend right after it. So we're going to start on Sunday night. Basically, just we were planning on this last Sunday night, we're going to start on this Sunday night. I think all along we've talked about the week of the 6th or 13th doing the work anyhow. And so it'll be Sunday night is the plan. We come in around 10 o'clock and start, and then just walk right through the week. So that's, that's the latest, that's at 4:30 today.
And Clay, I had some citizens asking about what direction it was going to start at 71 working.
That's the plan, south to north.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Attorney.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. If you've noticed already, there's two resolutions in the packet, Resolution 2018 Oak dash 07, Resolution 2018 dash 10. If you remember, the county had asked that the city stated its position on what was initially started off as the 10th Street Ballpark, and then there were some questions regarding the Field of Dreams. The reason there's two proposed resolutions in the agenda packet is because hopefully tonight we'll see some resolution, but we do not know where the board will be at. That's ultimately going to be a discussion that the board will have to take. I would remind the board that on June 19, 2018, there was a five a motion approved for option six with the understanding that one of the softball fields could be removed and the size could possibly, possibly be reduced. So if anything is changed outside of that approved motion, there needs to be a motion to rescind because that was approved. But at this time, I'm going to turn it over to the commission in regards to 10th Street Ballpark, handover to Field of Dreams, or anything else the board wishes to address.
Floyd Emmerich.
I'd like to hear from Commissioner Hoffman. I know you started looking at plans seven. Could you fill us in on what we found out about that?
Let me know if you can't hear us. There you go. Can't hear you. I'll get a little closer. It's aggravating when you can't hear what people are saying and you're trying to read their lips. Appreciate it, Commissioner Ashbrook. Yeah, at our last meeting, I felt a need to table moving forward. No matter where you were in the choices of location, either being Field of Dreams or 10th Street, my thinking was you can't really make a good, solid decision and have a good, solid opinion unless you have all the facts. So we tabled the issue, and now we have some facts. And the Field of Dreams figures came in based on a very basic drawing. This drawing, which was posted on the website, is six fields with a bathroom and concession stand more or less, and that's just a basic concept of what we want, or what I've been told we've wanted as far as the citizens and the ballplayers, softball and baseball. So we had a cost analysis prepared. I think Clay had this like in two days, so he did a really good job of putting some prices down. Well, there are things on the price sheet that I feel like could easily be removed. One of them is the asphalt parking lot, and I've talked to Clay and Jim about this as well. So I removed several of the items that I think we could look more at and focus on in Phase Two or even a Phase Three if we have support for the idea of going to the Field of Dreams. But the figure came in initially at 3.3 million, and just with the things that I feel like could be removed, I got it down to 2.57. So we're still a little ways away from the 2.1 price list at the 10th Street Ballpark. So then I started thinking, well, we have figures in front of us. Now let's weigh in on the pros and the cons as far as where do we want the ball field. So yesterday, I spent a little time and I went and visited with two of the coaches that were at 10th Street coaching. And I asked the baseball players, the coaches, I said, well, give us, just give me some insight. I'm not a coach right now. So I wanted to know how many of your kids actually ride bicycles to the fields? Because I kept hearing some people say, well, if you go to the Field of Dreams, it's too far, kids can't ride a bicycle. And I understand that. So I wanted to know how many kids would that really be affecting? And according to those two coaches, they currently have zero kids that are playing on their team riding bicycle or walking. And one of them went as far as to say he's never coached a player that routinely or often rode a bicycle or walked to the field. So then I got in my car and I thought, well, how far away are we talking? So I left 10th Street Ball Field and I drove to the Field of Dreams location. I drove 30 miles an hour and stopped where I was supposed to stop. It took less than six minutes. So it's less than a six-minute drive to the field, because that's important. Well, then I just started asking people, where would you rather have a field built? I called a softball coach that's involved currently, and I said, you won't hurt my feelings if you tell me you prefer 10th Street because I prefer the Field of Dreams. And he said, no, Scott, if I had my decision, I would rather be at the Field of Dreams. So I think it's fair to say there's, there's going to be coaches, I'm sure somewhere, I never met one, that might say, no, I'd rather play at 10th Street. There's going to be kids that may say the same thing. But after looking at the data and speaking to residents around the park, and we've heard from several, and from listening to coaches that are both involved in baseball and softball, I can't see, other than the cost analysis, there is a difference of roughly, I don't know, close to $700,000. So you have to decide, is, is the Field of Dreams concept and location worth the extra money? My mind is definitely it is. I think we have, there's, there's some pros to it. One is if you are coaching a sport, or you have a kid or grandkid in a sport, you have no downtime if we build at the Field of Dreams. If we have to, or if we move toward 10th Street, there's going to be time that the fields are being worked on. They're going to be replacing fields, and I don't know how long that's going to take, but I think it would be safe to say there will be an interruption in, in gameplay. So what do you do then? So those are the things that I looked at, and I think after all of the information is looked at with an open mind, I think that the best choice is going to be for the Field of Dreams. Furthermore, there's been some talk about adding different concepts, like tying in the walking trail to the Field of Dreams. I think that would be a big benefit, and the opportunity to expand is definitely at the Field of Dreams. It's not going to be at 10th Street Ball Field. We, I think we're going to have battle after battle from the community that live around the 10th Street Ball Field if we start talking about expanding into Phase Two or Phase Three. So that's what I have to, to offer tonight as far as the new information since we tabled.
You in there? Who else? Come up to the podium, yes, and state your name and write it in the report.
My name is Mike Holcomb, and I live in Jones Homestead. Is Field of Dreams in the city?
Yes, that property was annexed.
It's close to it, I know.
Well, it was donated from the paper company to the city.
But it is in the city now?
The property around it, surrounded is in the county.
But the Field of Dreams property itself is in the city?
Can you believe it was in?
Yes, yes.
Okay, have you talked to the residents in Jones Homestead about the, putting the field out there? Because they're not in the city. Jones Homestead is not.
No, we haven't.
So y'all going to throw something out there without giving us any representation?
Well, are you aware of where it's at?
Yes, I'm well aware of where Field of Dreams was proposed.
Yeah.
Ten years ago.
Yeah, it's the same property, but there is definitely property between where the fields would be and where the halls are.
Is there a light stream, kill them lights at night from my house?
Well, I don't know exactly where you live.
I'm not getting any representation up here out of you guys because I'm not in the city.
All of us are sold on Field of Dreams, sir.
Okay, I'm glad to hear that.
You heard one person speak so far.
Okay.
So I guess I'll just go and say my spiel now.
All right, come on up.
I got a different question.
First sign, any friends?
Five seconds.
Yes, sir. Roger, Patrick.
You say that address too?
No, sir, just your name. Rocket Shaw.
Number one on that, I live 11 miles from the ball field, never get a practice. Bicycle ride in six minutes don't mean nothing to me. Field of Dreams, make up your mind that this is a very sports-oriented town. Do you want a whole district tournament, regional tournaments, state tournaments? It's a good thing. Can be. Great state of town, all right, all revenue, everything.
Let us finish the discussion by the commissioners, and then I'll let the people come up if they want to speak. Anyone else wants to speak, I want them to go ahead.
You know, it is a hard choice out here. I've been living on 10th Street now since 2005, and the noise of the ballpark to me has never bothered me. People parking all in my front yard during games has never bothered me, never. I, if I had one child, if I budgeted send this thing out to the Field of Dreams, and I had just one kid get hurt by trying to get to that ballpark, and I know you say, oh, they can make it. Well, maybe they can't. And if one kid got hurt, I couldn't say I, I made him go out there. So that is my biggest reason. I think we can do some things down there. I don't think pickleball needs to be down 10th Street. People don't want it on 10th Street. Not the residents with the players. I've had about seven or eight emails, people saying, you know, we don't want pickleball, we want it over here by the bank. That's what they wanted it. So I think pickleball should be taken out of there. But everything else, I think our kids need it. I don't think it's going to give a real hardship on the homeowners, I really don't. I talked to Clay about flooding stuff, and he's assured that he's going to take care of that part of it. And, and that's just how I feel about it.
Mayor, I mean, I agree with what you just said, and, and, you know, I appreciate Commissioner Hoffman going out and doing that research, but it is the dollars and cents, it's 750,000, three-quarters of a million dollars more that we're going to have to come up with. And I would hate for us to be in a position where we've got half of a project done, we can't find the funds. You know, it took us how many years to find funding for Long Avenue, we still don't have it yet. It took us how long to get a sidewalk connected, you know? I would, I would rather stay with what we know we can pay for, and I would like to stick with the original motion.
Well, I understand what everybody's saying about the Field of Dreams and, but where I live at, what my neighborhood and the kids that are in my neighborhood, I know that all of them, it'd be tough for them to get out there on Field of Dreams. I mean, we've got some people with single parents that struggle to get their kids to 10th Street. So with that said, and that, and the money issue, that's how, why I feel that it needs to stay on 10th Street.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I'll say a little something. I've also had the response from the pickleball players as well, and it's, it's almost to the point where they don't, they don't want any down there. They want eight, or based on the emails, none there. So we're going to have, I don't know where we're going to figure that out within the city. You might have to venture out into the county. But I, I've said it over and over again, you know, you see a $2 million figure and a $3 million figure here, and we can, you know, we can tackle that $2 million figure with county TDC money, the fifth penny, and the possibility of our, the possibility of our grant of about $900,000 that we will not get out at the Field of Dreams. So we'd be lacking another million, so that's, and that's the fixed range. It really isn't. I know Clay, Clay will work on that, and that's where I'm at.
All right. Come on up. Guy in the back. Yes, sir. Come on up.
Now, Art Rogers, I live in 18 North. Now, I want to start off by saying something that I'm not 100% sure of, because I was told this by a lifetime resident. I was told that the 10th Street Ballpark started out with one ball field. Then you added another one. When I say you, I mean the city. I'm sorry. I know. Then the city added a third one. Next thing you know, the city went across the street, and there's two softball fields, and y'all want to add one more. It seems to me y'all have a, I shouldn't, the city has the ideal that we'll just keep adding one more. And as it stands right now, the city does not maintain the drainage system that's to drain the water that runs off of the ball field, because the ball fields, apparently dirt was brought in or whatever, I wasn't here, I don't know, but the land was built up for the ball fields. Now, that is causing water issues to people on 10th Street, I mean, pardon me, on Marvin. And if you build up the ground again, build another ball field, that's going to move it further on down Marvin where water's backing up. That, that area there, my understanding, was a runoff area for the watershed. And you, you keep filling it in with dirt, you're taking away the, the runoff. It can't runoff because the land is higher than the rest of it. And when I say the city does not maintain the drainage systems, I have some pictures, if y'all let me bring them up too, I'll show you. It, my yard filled up with water here the other day because of all the rain. I simply walked down across, and that's one of my neighbors, my next door neighbor there walked across the back of his door over to where there is a drainage. The darn thing was slack full of limbs and everything else. Because as you know, when, when the water flows, it's going to carry stuff with it. So I cleaned out the area fairly well, and the water drained off then. So the ball fields and the kids playing ball is really not the issue. The issue is we have a water problem where you are flooding people's yards. And y'all refuse to do anything about it for whatever reason, I have no idea. And you pull it, the more you, the more you fill in that, that drainage system down through there, the more water you're going to back up. And that's going to be more yards flooded, and the yards that are being flooded will be flooded worse because they're downhill, so to speak. And it doesn't really matter where the ball fields, the ball fields are put. The ball field need, we need them for the kids. Everybody, nobody's complaining about the kids playing ball. Y'all keep throwing up, well, it's for the kids. So I'm saying for the kids, we need to build some ball fields somewhere, wherever you, wherever the city decides to build them, but they don't need to be built in a, in a residential area, because if you do get teams, I know over in Panama City, they were saying they had 500 teams over there. Now, I'm quite sure that we're not equipped with six fields to handle that kind of people. That's if you add one extra, you know? We're not equipped if you had 100 teams coming, 50 teams.
I don't think we'd ever do it, that'd be, I don't see it.
That's, that's, that's the whole thing, add one field at a time. Next, next few years, well, we got to have another field. Now we got to have another field. Next thing you're going to have fields all the way down to 16th Street. I mean, ball fields need to be made somewhere, put somewhere where it, it doesn't interfere with the residents of the city, any of the residents, I'm saying. And it, the, where the ball fields are now needs to be returned back to a drainage system where the water can run off. And I mean, that's, that's a lot of money just to do that, because all that dirt the city has brought in over the years and piled up will cost a lot of money to move it off if it's moved. So I've got pictures right here showing my yard flooded, showing the ball field, it's definitely up higher where it's been raised up. And I thought if you went into a floodplain area, a flood, or a swampy area or something, if you developed that land, I thought by law you had to give, replace that land somewhere else, and the city hasn't been doing that. I mean, y'all, if I went, if I went out there, I could go out there and bring me in a dozen or so dump trucks, bring my yard up to, to even with the ball field, and what's, what's that going to do? That's going to take all the water out of my yard, right? But it's going to flood all of my neighbors where the water's coming down.
Yes, you don't get any water coming to you off of, off of water, aren't you down in a gully like where you live? I mean, you would naturally have water running down there. I've seen all the yards before when ball wasn't even a session, and, uh...
Yes, but a lot of that water's draining off of that ball field that is two feet or so higher than everybody else's yard, and where the drains were put in, one of them's even on somebody else's property, it don't even belong to the city, but we'll let that go for it, you know? That's up to them if they want to speak up about it. And the drains are staying plugged up. I've got a picture right here over towards his back, where his backyard was when he lived next door to me, showing the water in his yard. So he knows what is going, he knows what happens when we get a lot of rain. It floods all of those yards, and maybe not all of it, but you can't control Mother Nature, but you can control the flow of the water when you build the land, increase the height of the land by several feet. That, that pushes the water to a lower spot, and that's people's backyards now. But the land is raised up. In some places, right to the property lines, and in other places, it's a few feet away from the property lines. So if y'all going to raise that land up, and why in the world did you create a flood area and then allow people to build houses on it? People come in here not knowing any better and buy one of them houses and find out, well, stubble up. That did bad to your bad luck, to what the water's running off the ball field going down in your yard, but that's your problem, that's not mine. And I'll tell you, if I, if it was reversed, if I raised my yard five or six feet and all the water running down in the ball field, y'all'd be over my house knocking the door down to get in there and tell me, I got to get all that dirt out of the yard because I'm, I'm flooding out the ball field. But it seems that it's all right for y'all to flood it out, the residents out. And like I say, you fix, you one, you one ball field at a time till we're reaching to a point now where you want to one ball field again. I realize this has been over 40 or so more. I realize this has been over 40 or so more years than all this has taken place, maybe 50 years, whatever you want to say. 50 years from now, if we're continuing that way, you'd be going on the other side of 16th Street. One ball field at a time, and every time you do it, you fill in more dirt and you restrict the flow of water more. I mean, if we get a lot of rain, a flood, and the water comes in my yard, there's no complaint to me because that's just nature doing its thing. But when you build up the land and it starts flooding my yard, that is a city problem because they don't care about the residents unless they're going to continue to flood their yards.
I agree. We probably need to step up cleaning out those things that you're talking about. Maybe we can get our city employees to check on those more often to keep them cleaned out. A lot of it over on Woodward. I had a guy had his yard kept flooding up. Well, it just started up in the back. And I think we've been keeping it cleaned out. I'll have to check on it to be sure.
Jim, I guess we need to just ask public workers if they'll go by and check on those drainage systems better, keep them cleaned out.
Well, you know, that's a bad technique, really. That's an improvement, but it doesn't solve the problem because you brought up this... The city brought all this dirt in here and it's filling up an area that if I would have owned that land and I went to build a house on it, the federal government would have told me, "No, I can't build a house there unless I replace that land somewhere else."
Mr. Rogers, we're going to probably have to move on here shortly.
Okay, well, I understand you don't have all the essence of me, right? But this is... To keep telling people you're going to do something is not solving the problem. This problem will be here forever if you keep flooding people's backyards. If you want to keep that ball field there, you need to go down through there and buy everybody's house down through there. And we'll move over somewhere else here and change those. We'll buy us a house somewhere else. And I mean, Lord knows, there's plenty of them running around here empty already. I mean, so get your city's money together and start buying the houses that are flooded now.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
Thank you.
If I may.
Yes, go ahead.
From what I understand from our attorney, there's already Plan Six that has been voted on. At this time, I'd like to go ahead and withdraw that motion and follow that up with a new motion. Do I have to have a vote to withdraw that? Is that all I need to do?
Yes, if you're planning to make a new motion outside of what was in the originally approved motion from June 19th.
I will draw the original motion to approve Plan Six, and I will replace that with a new motion to approve Option 6A with the pickleball courts removed as well as the splash pad that'll bring us down another $225,000, taking the total price up to about 1.8, which we should easily be able to accommodate. And that is my motion.
You would not have to withdraw the previous motion because what 6A does is encapsulate inked paper what your motion is in 6A. Which in 6, you still have to understand that one of the softball fields could be removed and the size could possibly be reduced. So that's essentially what the plan in 6A does.
I would like the pickleball courts out as well as the splash pad.
You wouldn't have to rescind your motion.
Okay. Then I guess the next...
What about the length of the list?
It was 200, I think, in 6A.
So what is your motion?
So what does my motion do? Do you mean that resolution?
If you wish to approve 6A with any caveats, that would be your motion. So approve 6A, remove pickleball, and any other caveats that you want.
That is my motion.
We have a motion and condition to ask for. We have a second.
We're going to do some discussion before we vote.
I guarantee you. Yes, sir. We're not going to vote before we let you speak, Robert. Yes, sir.
Y'all please speak up below there. It's hard to hear y'all in the back.
All right. We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the board?
I'd like to bring up one fact before we move any further. We keep talking about the dollar amounts as if that's a upfront purchase price. And I'd like to remind the board that these figures are based on a complete build-out. So when you look at either Build of Dreams or 10th Street Ball Field Auction, the dollar amount is a total build-out whereas we can... I think we should be fair about it and be looking at it as a phase-in amount. So you could go to Build of Dreams, which is obviously more money, but you're not going to spend $3 million on the initial building of the ball fields. It may be a year, it may be two-year program. Now, the information that I've been given from TDC and from what little bit I can get out of the county commissioners is that the funding is currently available. And the startup funding is somewhere around $850,000 to a million. That's what's there present. So we have to look at this in a long-range concept and remind ourselves that the indication from the current board that Eric is sitting on, Mike McCord is sitting on, Grantland is sitting on, and it's chaired by the county commissioner Sandy Quinn, that committee has already suggested to the Board of County Commissioners to continue funding in the future. So let's not get caught up on thinking, "Well, we can't do all that for $850,000." I'm predicting that the funding will continue in the years to come, and that's why I don't think just the dollar amount is a deal breaker.
Anyone? Roberts, you want to come on?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I got the motion, but I did not hear who seconded the motion.
Mr. White.
Thank you, sir.
Roberts, you want to come on, ma'am?
I'm over.
Okay.
I'm ahead. I've had quite some time. You are 100% right, Mr. Hoffman. I pulled the 2014 August 5th minutes from the TDC and have the exact information as to what the fifth penny was to go to. Mr. Yeager was the one that made the motion, and then it was seconded by a member of Whitfield. And it was upon motion to proceed with the recommendation to the fifth penny for a sports complex. So it's not a one-time thing. I also did a lot of research after we finished because I felt like it was important to bring back good information. And one of the people that I went to was Jason Scho, who, as you all know, sits on the Triumph Board. And I said to Jason, "My understanding from being from Panama City is that Bay County has put forth a sports complex application for Triumph." And he said, "That is indeed true." And I said, "Would you mind sending me that proposal, that application, and tell me a little bit more about it?" And he said, "It's got a good chance of being funded. Dan Rowe is working very diligently with the elected officials to make sure that that gets funded." So I said, "Okay, send me the application and I'll send it on to two of the county commissioners." And I did. And I said, "Here's our opportunity. And we're not talking about the grandiose plan that would be put forth by Frank Brown Park. We're talking something lower scale." Dan Rowe even came back and said, "I would be willing to help the people in Gulf County, you know, with their application, answer questions, whatever. Because here's the way I see it. We've got a massive population, but we see what you're trying to do. And it's about that vision and long-term plan that Commissioner Hoffman's talking about. So spending... Why spend pennies, you know, that you don't have to spend when you can kind of do something that is more visionary and you can grow into and you can meet a lot of needs? And as the population grows, you can continue to add on to it. It's logic. That's what I really desire for you guys and from you guys is looking at a long-term vision for the city and then the county. And I will tell you, just as Mr. Hoffman, I know, spoke to two county commissioners, I did too. And they're willing to, all of us work together as a community and a county and a city to see something good happen out at the Field of Dreams that's not divisive, that you're not going to get a lot of phone calls about. You got the fifth penny. Today, I attended the TDC meeting. That does sunset in 2019. But they are saying that they're going to continue that fifth penny, that that's their desire. And I want you all to think about that. The collaboration from city, county, or residents, or ballpark folks, pickleball people... Pickleball people showed up today to the TDC meeting, and they said they want to go out to Veterans Park. So there are things we can do with the Field of Dreams and finally make something that people said that they were passionate about a reality, a reality. So I'm going to give Ms. Charlotte this minutes. I'm also going to share with her, you know, how much money the city's truly gotten from their parks from the TDC. And I've talked about this. We've gotten $39,000 over 2015, 16, 17, 18. That is non-acceptable. It's just not. And that's where I would ask you guys, again, get with the county and ask for things. I know that Ms. Charlotte has been lobbying and working hard to get money for Core Park. I think what she's doing and what her team's doing is wonderful. And they've put their money where their mouth is. And so I just don't want us to get so far away from what good could be done with the Field of Dreams. And I want to remind you all of one other thing that I'm going to include. We have a petition that one little citizen went out and in a couple of days got 125 signatures saying we had concerns. We're concerned about our flooding. We're concerned about our green space. These are things I would be concerned for you if these were in your homes. Because that's where I live. That's what I believe in. That's what community is about, is caring for all your neighbors. Now, as far as getting kids from point A to point B, I talked to Mr. Yeager about that. And he said, "When I was a coach, Christie, if a kid had a problem, I stepped up and I went and got that kid." And I've taken kids personally from basketball back home. That's what a community does. You step up and you help those. So gentlemen, I'm sorry. I just want to see things back to a place where we're operating for the greater good and the good of the community. And flooding us out and putting a bunch of mess behind our homes and devaluing our homes, it just seems like you're discriminating against us. And I got a problem with that.
Thank you, ma'am. Roberts, you want to come on, ma'am?
Robert Branch, 1016 Marvin. Last meeting, 7/17. It was, I think, voted on with 4 to 1. What was the... Do y'all remember what the recommendation was? Y'all voting on 4 to 1? Or do I need to... What was that recommendation? It was voted on 4 to 1 in the last meeting of the...
It was a table that and see if the committee would add four members to it.
Four members? Has anything added?
Yes.
Why?
I think that committee is about to get dissolved.
What? Okay. Okay, let's get back to that. What committee are we talking about?
That's the county rec...
Subcommittee meeting.
Baseballers Complex.
So y'all say we don't even need a committee now? Is that what you're saying, buddy? I mean...
Well, I mean, I...
Let me cut the bull out of it. Like one person sitting up here is actually working to get this ball rolling. We not only know who it is, like one of y'all sitting up there. And the other four, at least, anything, nobody is saying. It went in one ear and out the... Am I right? Okay, that was one. I mean, it was voted on last time, 4 to 1, to talk to the residents. And y'all still are not letting the residents... Don't y'all hear enough what we got to say? I mean, like Christie said, the Field of Dreams is a dream. That's a... I mean, you keep putting a U-engine in an old park for seven years or you move on by your U-car and that is... You don't say anything about it. Go drive about a Howard Cadillac over there. 15 years ago, I played at that park. I took a bunch of kids over there, more than once. Okay, now, if you look what they started with, they set on 8 acres, about like this right here in Pittsburgh. They got 20 and 80. They started with six fields right there, right in the center of it. They doing them phases. Okay, they didn't do it all at one time. They worked... Go over and look at now what's there. Have any of y'all been a regular? Have any of y'all been to the Cadillac Sports Complex?
My ladies, I've been there several times.
That is a park anywhere in this area that everybody would be proud of. And the same thing can happen right out here. But until y'all get y'all's heads together and it happens, it ain't going to happen. Now, why I'm here? Y'all all need to ride around a little because, like you say, they want y'all to try and do something, the other ain't even listening. What is the biggest concern about what... Not thinking of Field of Dreams. What is y'all's biggest concern? All five of y'all?
Safety for the kids and my boy going there and playing.
Mr. Larry?
I think it's closer in town for the kids, but I also think the money situation that I explained several times.
Okay, money situation. Let's get back to that, okay? Now...
You want to let me explain?
I'm listening.
I want to... I mean, y'all spoke about drainage problems in y'all's backyard. I experienced it. And I'm here and I want to fix it. I... There's a possibility of getting, a great possibility of getting roughly a $900,000 grant to fix drainage in that whole area. We got a massive stormwater problem there. And you guys all know it. And that's going to be a portion of the money to fund the project.
What project is that?
The 10th Street project.
Was the fifth penny started for actually Field of Dreams? Was the fifth penny started for the 10th Street or did it start for the Field of Dreams out there?
Field of Dreams.
Where was it started for?
I'm not sure.
Well, I think y'all need to get your facts right.
I know what they say now is...
This is the...
All over the county.
Since February, this is the worst planning I have ever seen. Now, if one of y'all up there that's doing it, the rest of y'all are going to squat and hide now. But tell us a bunch of bull. Now, Bo, your concern is safety for a kid, right?
Yeah, hardship there, getting out of the... We'll lose some players.
Do what?
We'll lose players. We'll lose ball players.
Listen, that's the biggest misconception I've ever heard. Now, it hasn't changed in 15 years, however, down there. Now, I left an hour early. I started on north side, and I started picking up ball players, and I went this way picking up ball players. Guess what? I got... Nobody rode a bicycle, and nothing's changed. That's the biggest misconception y'all have been leading about kids getting there that I've ever heard of. Now, if you're talking about safety, what's a kid going to do when he sits in a ditch down there and drowns the 10th Street first to ride a bicycle out there? I just want y'all to step up, do what's right. I mean, like I say, y'all, that's all we got to do, step up. The other four of y'all are going to do step up, do what's right. That's all I'm asking you. That's all I'm asking.
Thank you, Robert. Yes, ma'am. I think I let, somebody over here, bring your hands up?
My name's Jai Bryant. I have a question for you. So we're talking about the Field of Dreams project or the project for the park. And there's something that Commissioner Langston had mentioned with regards to the children over in, apparently, North Port St. Joe and access to the field. And so my concern is that if we keep the point, the point which is a facility for the children, it would just, you know, in my mind, we would make sure that it's accessible to all the children. So if kids are not going to be able to easily commute to the facility, it stands to reason that it, it, you know, why are we doing this unless there are contingencies put in place? For instance, if you do decide to do the Field of Dreams project out there, is there going to be some sort of transportation that's put for, to make sure that the kids don't have to worry about it? And the lady that spoke beforehand, she was, she was very passionate about this is a community, right? And that we should be able to take care of each other. So I would ask that as a community, if that's what ends up happening, that it's not just a, we expect goodwill from one another because from my experience, just that goodwill portion doesn't work unless it's penciled out and made formal. So I would ask that if the Field of Dreams project does go for, that there would be some type of formal transportation plan put in place where children would be able to easily go back and forth to the field where everybody would have access. That's number one. And number two, when we address the issue of financing, I, I do believe that you have to plan for the future. You know, you can't, you, you manage the big thing while it's yet small. So I do understand that principle. But I think that within this, we do need to be financially responsible as well. I think we can see the state of, you know, our country and various things when we went through a, a financial guffalo, that it was because we weren't being physically responsible. And sometimes we have caviar dreams and are dealing with a bare budget. So I think that we do have to take that into consideration while we're doing this. I think that if it did end up being 10th Street, like Commissioner Laurie is saying, there's $900,000, maybe some grant funding that's gonna help remediate the sewage problem. And I, I would think that if you did a campaign and made the individuals aware of, this is what we're gonna do, and it's not just left in this room for a discussion, but, you know, there are flyers or something like that, where you went door to door and just assured the citizens here that change is coming, we're going to take care of it, I think you would more so have that warm and fuzzy feeling that you're looking for, right? So I think, again, I just wanna reiterate that if we're keeping the point, the point which is access for the children for the Field of Dreams, then it needs to be accessible. And if that's what it ends up being, that there needs to be something formal as far as a transportation plan for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on up, lady.
Say your name for us.
Suzanne Marshall.
Robert Thomas.
Hi, well, we've heard a lot about pickleball this afternoon. We thank you so much for taking the time to listen to us. There, there are a lot of pickleball players in, in Gulf County. Mexico Beach, which is the group that was speaking at the.
TDC.
TDC today. They represent probably sixty players. It's a lot over there. We have forty-five to fifty players in Port St. Joe. So that's why you'll hear there's a, a group over there and a group within your city that, you know, and we get a, a lot of people in, in the fall and wintertime. So you'll see the tennis courts over there by the bank in Pay Park really build up with people, you know, for pickleball during that time. So we would request that you, please, don't pull the, pull, don't pull our, that line item on pickleball from your budget, but just relocate it to Pay Park.
Ma'am, that was, that was my intent.
Oh.
By, by removing that.
Okay.
You know, the Firdout Committee, the reason I pulled the splash pad, the Firdout Committee had put in for a grant for that, and I'd like to refocus their efforts on improvements to that.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank y'all.
Problem, ask a question about the pickleball. Are you guys planning on putting two, four, six, or eight in Pay Park? If it's gonna be a football course along? Do I have a number?
I don't, I don't think there's been planned. I, I've discussed it with individuals, but I don't see any way to put eight there. I mean, I know, I know the, what everybody wants is eight, but.
Oh, everybody don't want it. We, we won't let it. Y'all wanna give one, two?
Well, I, I can tell you that I measured it last night, and I combined, chatted with y'all this morning a little bit about it. Actually, if we took the existing tennis court that sits there and we went sixty feet on each side, not going any further toward the water or the parking, sixty foot towards Sunset Coastal Grill, there's plenty of room for that. That would give us two new pickleball courts. Then we would have the tennis court slash pickleball where they would still be sharing that tennis court. It'd be resurfaced. And then sixty additional feet going towards the north. There's one pine tree there that's half dead. I think it was struck by lightning. Probably needs to be cut down anyway. With the removal of the one pine tree and relocating the power pole, maybe even going with underground powers, would be my thought, you could actually have eight pickleball courts.
So, so, for dedicated and then shared with the tennis.
All right.
What I wanna say is, I wanna be honest about something. You, you five guys up here don't know what I'm about to say right now, but four years ago, we had, when, uh, Buzette was up there, Buzette and Phil McCone was up there. They had a, they allocated through the city that it's gonna be a, I mean, eight pickleball courts for us on the north side. And I was against it, to be honest with you. Even out here in Port St. Joe, eight courts, you're not gonna be using that many courts out there. Four courts are not gonna be used. Only, you could try to use that many courts. Right now, myself and Suzanne and four other people, we got four courts out there right now, and we only get six people out there.
In the summer.
In the summertime. That's like in April, it's very important right now. We're not even using other courts out there. So we're trying to save you guys, not by not building that many courts. I'm just, I'm just being honest with you. We don't need no eight courts out there. But the problem I got with it is, and I'm gonna say this, I see you guys up here, but Phil McCone and Ray Buzette had me, myself, and another guy go up to the north side, and they had the money allocated. City, city's gonna pay for this. I said, "We're gonna, we're gonna build a court, Robert." There's one speculation, though. Buzette asked me, Robert, and everybody in Mexico Beach and Port St. Joe, and ask them when they come together to play, to use the courts there. I'm gonna be honest with you, I'm, I'll be the fitter, but they answered me the most. The whites told me, "We ain't coming to Port St. Joe, we ain't coming to Mexico, we ain't leaving Mexico Beach to come down here." So I'm letting you know, I'm just being straight on it with you. We had the opportunity to have a court built four years ago. So if you guys take off the board, I'm gonna be like, "I don't, I don't really care to take off the board completely." But we, we had the opportunity, we had this thing done, I wouldn't be able to talk to you right now. But the whites, I'm saying the whites, I ain't go, I'm, I'm on the black flag this year. Okay? The whites said, "They ain't leaving Mexico Beach to come down here." And the ones in Port St. Joe said the same thing. They not coming to the north side. And this is what they said, "I don't wanna be around shopping on houses. I'm a black man living in Port St. Joe on the north side of there." And that was a pinhead hill. So if you guys don't give them this, what they're asking for, I have no problem. But I am gonna go up here, be honest with you, you don't need eight courts, you don't need four courts. The most you mean, let me go to the next, to be honest with you. So you guys keep that consideration. I, me, I'm bringing this up, I saw it in your room around here, but y'all had to figure a hundred seventy-five thousand off. I'm trying to save you a hundred sixty-five thousand.
Bill, what we need, right, Robert?
Deal what you need.
Now, tennis court, the size of a tennis court, how many pickleball courts can you get out of there?
We got four.
Four are there.
So if you wanna build two more, that's fine. But my problem with it is, Suzanne wasn't here, but I was on the board. Go out and ask Mexico Beach people. Buzette and Phil McCone, hey, just build, Robert, just see when they come together. These people wouldn't even come together. We don't wanna go on the north side while them shopping them houses over there. I don't wanna drive through there. And me being a black man, you know, everybody's not criminal on the north side of there. There's some good people out there.
Do you think the mood has changed in today's time or years later?
This Port St. Joe ain't gonna change here. It ain't gonna change.
I play here.
So, but I'm telling you, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm just being direct with you. You wanna put two over there, that's fine, but you don't wanna put nothing over there, that's fine with me. And these guys, they want eight, they wanna run a train race here.
To take eight, they wanna run a train?
Yeah, they say.
I said, "We can put another one forward, that would give you eight."
Yes, that would.
Ah, that's what I think would be ideal, as you said.
The ones that wanna put eight here, they in North Carolina for six months.
We're the ones. We're the ones playing. This is their day.
I, like I said, I, I don't like the idea that y'all, a lot of people are just out here trying to run this thing. People are telling y'all this, they not even here. They and Suzanne aren't here. You know, people in North Carolina and Mobile, everywhere, gonna run this, but they ain't, they ain't here. I'm just being honest with you. Two would be sufficient.
We'd be happy.
Okay. We'll get you something.
Okay.
And I won't say thank you, but like I, I want y'all to know, it ain't bothering me that we're at this point right now where you can't get white and black to come together, something that's always agreed for you. You know, why not? Why don't we all just treat ourselves like human beings instead of, you know, black and white?
Exactly.
You know? We get more done treating human beings than we did white and black. So again, I'm gonna leave it at you guys. You wanna build it, it's fine. You don't wanna build it, fine, I'm cool.
Thank you.
Appreciate anything you do.
You're welcome.
Okay, before we move forward, is there anybody else that's white, saying anything about the 10th Street?
Claire Morris, 1304 Marvin Avenue. You talked about the money. We were at the first, not the first, or the first meeting that we attended this year of the park committee meeting, and you as city unanimously approved 2.5 million for the park. Now, we're talking about 2.57 million at Field of Dreams, and that's too much. I got the paperwork. This was the plan, the plan number three was a big plan. You all unanimously voted on it, I know you weren't on the board at the time, but as a city. The county also voted on, voted on it. So somehow the funding at that time was fine, but funding now and staging this in, and again, not all at once, but staging this is out of the question. And I don't understand your sudden change of heart on it since you voted unanimously on it before. And as at the beginning, we have been left out. The pickleball people have been left out, the residents have been left out, the baseball, the softball. Last meeting said, "Let's have a resolution, let's get some citizens on board, let's get the people talking." And you're still not doing it. We're sitting here discussing it here, holding up all these people where we could have a workshop. And with the last workshop, you didn't allow anybody who's talked before to talk, and we ran out of time in the one hour. But let us get together. We don't want to fight. We wanna take this effort and our passion in working for a good. We can get behind the Field of Dreams. We can work with it, we can get all the parties involved. Find, I mean, you find out the pickleball didn't even really wanna be in that park. They wanna be someplace else. Had we talked to them, had you talked to them, you'd have known this a long time ago, we wouldn't have even been having this discussion. I wouldn't have been talking about pickleball into the residents. You've got to talk to us. These are our parks. We are the citizens of Port St. Joe. Everyone, every interest that these people have, you need to listen to us. And that's what we've asked from the beginning. You know, you don't have to send a resolution through, excuse me. You need to get a committee together, whether it's the county, who ca, okay, the county doesn't wanna do it. You can do it. We can do it. And we can, we will back the Field of Dreams. We wanna work for something positive. And I've met a lot of great folks in Port St. Joe in doing this. And they're good-hearted people, they're people that'll make sure those ballplayers get to the ball practice, to get to the games. We will make it work. But let us work together. Don't have us working apart. Don't have us, every meeting coming up with this. Let's work for a solution. I think the Field of Dreams can be it. It can be phased in. It's just like you do everything else, unless you just own limited funds. You have to phase things in. If you wanna do renovation on your home, you're buying a home, you're landscaping, you do what you can afford and you phase it in. You may have a grand plan, but cinch by the inch. And we can do it, and we can all work together on it, and we can get behind it, and we won't have to be going through this fussing at the meetings all the time. Let us work together.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, that's a good point.
This ma'am, hold on.
If, if you take away the pickleball, which is 175,000, and then you realize that you approved 2.5 for the other field, you actually now could move to the Field of Dreams and save 105,000 dollars less than what you approved earlier.
Yes, ma'am.
First of all, I wanna thank you. 'Cause you have been the only one that has listened to any of us about Field of Dreams. Everyone else, you four, have not. Especially you. I would like to point that out.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Because every time it's brought up, first thing you do is start wanting to cut things out or whatever, because you are determined to get it in our backyards. I thought he was mayor, but you seem to be always the one speaking up for making every decision real quick and snappy.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Let's don't beat somebody down if you're just media police.
Well, you think, I'm, okay.
I know, but you told me this, ma'am, he's easy.
That's fine. You're good at this, too. You're good at this, too. You don't respect anyone either because you're good at yelling at people. You've yelled at me many a times. So, but that said, you want us to come up here, we take our time, just like you did. We come up here, we try to voice our opinion as residents, we pay taxes, we live here. Y'all don't, don't respect us. So y'all expect us to respect you, but you don't. Respect us. We have tried to get you to listen to us. The only one that's listened to us is this man sitting right here that's tried to help us. Now, but that said, y'all don't care what we want. Y'all don't listen to what we want. Y'all say y'all are gonna take part of the money and you're gonna fix the flooding. How can we trust that it's going to happen? Because you tell us this? We've been told for years, you lived next door to me, we've been told for years that you were gonna, they were gonna fix the flooding. When you lived next door to me, did they ever get fixed? No, it did not.
I never knew it was gonna get fixed.
Oh, you did? Did you ever complain to the city about the flooding?
No.
Well, how'd you expect it to get fixed? I've complained.
I knew, I, I knew it was there, I knew it was, it was flood-prone area.
But you didn't have to see it fix it?
We're, I'm, my plan is to fix it.
Buzette, we're supposed to just take everybody's word for it. Well, when you guys, for whatever reason, are no longer here and our yards are still flooding, we're still supposed to believe your word that that money that you're gonna, is supposed to be spent for the field and is put back behind our houses is going to be fixed. But see, this is gonna be passing the buck again. Well, if there's any way possible. Well, if there's any way possible, I hope the residents, because I'm going to be one of them, I will continue to fight if I can. I don't want it in my backyard. It's a residential area. It needs to be put where, and it's not anything about the kids. When I was a kid, if there was a kid that did not have a ride to a, whether it was a baseball game, a soccer game, or whatever, the coaches always made sure the kids got to the games. Bo, if you're so concerned about a kid not having a ride and you like kids so well, you can volunteer some of your time and take some of these kids to the game.
I'm going in the past, I'm going in the past.
Well, there you go.
Robert, I'll haul just like he did.
Well, there you go, if you're so concerned about that.
But Ms. Rogers, what if two or three of those youngsters say, anyway, just out of town, north out of town, want to go to a baseball field and just play some pickup ball? They, they not going to go way out there. I mean, they can't get where, who's going to take them out there? It's not a playing practice or anything.
You can take the fields behind our houses and let them still be fields that they can go and play on. We, none of us have ever said, take those fields totally away. We've never said that. There again, if you would listen to what the residents were saying, that's all we're But again, thank you, Mr. Hoffman.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers.
I'd like to.
Yes, sir, come on.
I'm Brad Vars at thirteen oh four Marvin. Bo, I'm really proud that you're so thoughtful about the children and everything, I really am.
Always have been.
I want to tell you this.
All right.
How, how many weeks out of the year are you going to have tournaments?
I have no idea.
I need an answer.
I don't even, I don't even have tournaments. You might, I think you might see probably three months worth of active ball.
Okay, three months of active ball. Okay, you're twelve months in a year, am I right?
I can tell you, I can tell you, there's probably a few in the back, you can probably tell us exactly.
Okay, that's fine, because I want to bring this up. Where are you going to practice softball and baseball at? Where are you going to practice the teams at?
I used to practice in a cow field.
Well, that was years ago when dinosaurs were here.
Let's be, let's be real.
Places they can find to practice.
We're talking about fields to play baseball.
If you are practicing ball, you can practice on these fields every day, practice. That's only three months out of the year that you're going to be out there at the Field of Dreams tournament playing in it. So you ain't going to have that much traffic of the children having to get all the way out to the Field of Dreams every day to practice. You got the fields right here to practice on. What do you want? And if you can't get the Field of Dreams, dream it. It'll work. Those kids are not going to be traveling all the way to Field of Dreams every day on their bicycles and everything, trying to get to practice. You got every field you need right there for practice. That's for tournaments, three months out of the year.
Thank you, sir. All right. Someone else wants to speak?
My name is Ben Ashcraft, sixteen oh two Marvin Avenue. Travel ball goes for eleven months out of the year. I have two kids that have lived here my whole life, their whole life, that play baseball ten months out of the year. Don't believe in P W football, don't believe in none of that. These people want to know why we want new baseball fields. Everybody around us hosts district tournaments, hosts state tournaments. I've lived here my whole life, worked here my whole life. Those ballfields have been down here probably since my uncles played baseball here. The houses that are in question, that are behind the ballfield now, have only been there maybe eight years, twelve years? When did you build your house?
They're talking about the old warehouse.
You're talking about past, ten?
The old.
Okay, okay, what, yeah. Right, right, where Miss Whitfield is now. Where the baseball field is, I'm sorry, because we only play baseball, my girls aren't old enough yet, but where the baseball fields are, those houses have just, down by the sack house, have only been there how many years forever?
Probably twenty.
Twenty, okay, twenty years. That place has always had a water issue. To me, I'm not for the ballfields going down there. I'm not for them going at the Field of Dreams. I'm for baseball fields, regardless of where they go. With that being said, if we had more facilities, if we had better restrooms, right now we have two restrooms at our ballfields. District, we have talked them into letting us host district tournaments. State tournaments, out of the question. The revenue from one travel ball team, one travel ball tournament is ungodly. The man said, while they go, a hundred teams over in Panama City, five hundred teams in Panama City? That's a fact. But you have teams coming from Mississippi, Alabama, Louisiana, all over the place. The travel ball we've been affiliated with goes from seven all the way up to seventeen, I believe. Each one of those age divisions is going to have anywhere from six to eight teams apiece. We play in Mariana on a complex that has six fields. You play all day long. It's, so I mean, we don't have the places to hold the people to come to these tournaments, but if there's any smart investors in the room, hotels out towards Appalachia Cola or wherever they want to go towards Weewaw, be a smart investor if we're going to build anything. Now, I will agree with some of them. I believe we need more people to understand what is going on here. The only reason I have not come to these meetings is because I lacked faith that any ballfield was going to get built. That's just personal preference. The more this goes on and goes on, I believe we've wasted a lot of time and money drawing plans on stuff that nobody knows that it's going to be factual or not. And I believe my dad has had some concerns with you after me and him talking. But the fact, yeah, the fact is, guys, we've all got to come together. I've heard a bunch of people say they're willing to help with the kids. I've been on the baseball board for about six and a half years now. I've coached for well over eight, nine years. We need volunteers. So I'm glad to see people that live on Marvin Avenue are fired up about volunteering and helping out with these kids. So thank you for your time, Jim.
I'll be very brief. Steve Womack, three oh two nineteenth Street, I'll write down here real quick. Clay, you're, you're an engineer, right? I mean, could you come up here and describe to the people and to the board the mitigation plan for the flooding, or if Brett said that there's a plan to make it better? You're, I think you probably have the most experience in here that he might be able to explain to some of us who are trying to wrap our head around it on, on what the plan is for, for mitigation of flooding on the 10th Street ballfields. And Mr. Hoffman, thank you so much for actually getting out there and doing the hard work, you know, measuring and talking to people. We see it, so thank you very much for that. And again, I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot, but he's your city engineer, right? He's an expert. So maybe he could get up here and explain to the people to, you know, tamper down some of their concerns.
Thank you, sir. Someone else in the back on here?
Name's Brad Knops, level one fourteen, Stone Drive. First off, I'd just like to say thank you to all of y'all for what the job you do. I mean, I appreciate each and every one of y'all being up here on the board and serving this, this community. Second off, I would just like to say, kind of piggyback off what Ben Ashcraft said, we do coach a travel ball team. We all are down there three days a week right now, all the way till November. Our season will end in November, we'll pick right back up in February, we'll start again, travel ball season. The team that we started is a twelve U team. And we don't have enough twelve-year-olds in this community to even play, because other sports are carrying on with them too. They have football, soccer, and everything. So other kids have other things to do, but these eleven kids that we have from ages twelve all the way to nine want to be out there. They want to play baseball. So let's give them that. Let's give them a nice place to play, a nice place to practice. We practice three days a week down there right now. Also, I just want this to move forward. I'm tired of every single week, y'all having to sit up here and listen to everything, pros, cons. There are no more pros and cons. We went over it all, we've covered it all, you've heard it all. Let's move forward. I don't care if you build the park out there at the Field of Dreams, I don't care if you build it on 10th Street, but let's end this tonight. Let's end this, let's move on, take a vote, one way or the other, and make a decision. It's a bitty, bitty chance that you're going to get it right, or you're going to get it wrong. But just make a decision, that's all I ask.
Thank you. All right. We got a motion on the floor in a second. So I'm going to call for the vote. Everybody who's in favor, say yea. Yea. Oppose? No. Okay, motion passes four to one. The motion that was made on the floor to accept ballpark six A and take out the pickleball and take out the splash pad. All right. Jim, you through Mr. Attorney?
No, sir, there's one other issue on the amended agenda, agenda, excuse me. Jim Seckles wishes to address the board regarding a special exemption request.
Thank you. I appreciate you guys hearing me tonight, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Get this down. Here in reference to a special exception that was requested by a resident of Bridgeport. It's Bridgeport Woodmere Phase Two. I'm not sure if you guys got anything addressed with that in your packets. I know it was a late entry. A resident at one twenty-nine Bridgeport Lane requested an addition to their house. They're extending their bedroom six feet, extending the kitchen and dining area six feet directly behind the house, in line with the sides of their house.
What lot number is that?
Address is one twenty-nine.
You know the lot number? I'm looking at the flats, I don't know what it is.
There's right here. Twenty-two? No, I'm twenty-two. That'd be twenty-one. If you look at all the flats, the flats are pretty much identical to each other. They all have a seven-foot front, they all have a seven and a half-foot inset on each side of the building. On this flat, it identifies the seven and a half feet, or the item under seventy-foot front. It also, on the left-hand side, was approved by the city commission in two thousand and five. Okay? Everything that I can research and come up with identifies that the inset from the side should have been ten feet. That's why the building department is requesting a special exception. I have exception to that based on the fact that the city commissioners at the time had already approved a seven and a half-foot inset on each side of the building. They are attaching it to their, directly to their house, it's not a separate building of any kind. Now they're requesting them to spend an amount of eight hundred dollars to extend on their house from what I believe to already be approved by the city commission, based on the fact there was no planning board in two thousand and five, they were generated in two thousand and eight. So they had to come here. They issued this out with all their signatures on it, allowing for the seven and a half-foot inset for all of Bridgeport Lane. I don't feel it is correct to charge the individuals at this time for an addition to their house in this manner, being directly attached and on the same lines as the originals, to put in an extension to their house and charge them a three hundred dollar fee, because it's not ten feet. It goes to the planning board, the planning board approves it, they basically paid three hundred dollars for something that has already been approved. On the right-hand side of their notes, if you look, it says all structures. It doesn't say all new structures or building structures, it just says all structures.
Excuse me. Tim, is there any ruckus?
No. So what I believe is, what I'm asking for is acknowledgement by this board that this is the legal inset for Bridgeport Lane of seven and a half feet, previously approved by the city commission of Port St. Joe in two thousand and five. I have a copy of their meeting minutes too that's shown, but their signatures are right on the plot map, and that no special exception should be required of the individual requesting, requesting the extension to their house, and that they be reimbursed with three hundred dollars that they were required to pay for this special exception.
So they went before the planning board and got a special?
They have not gone before the planning board.
They have received money here, Ron?
They've already turned in the money to the city. The city put it in the newspaper, put the sign out. The planning board has set a meeting for the fourteen. Being on a planning board meeting, myself, I would recommend to come right directly back to you guys because it is signed by the city commissioners. I cannot, and the planning board, I do not believe can override the city commissioners. They have the final say, that's what's on the plot map. I don't want to get into a quandary back and forth that we said no, send it back to you, we have another meeting and determine. All I need is recognition from you guys that this is the legal document for the inset on Bridgeport Lane, and that they should not be required to have special exception, and the fact that the city will have to reimburse them three hundred dollars at this time in lieu of a potential eight hundred dollar reimbursement later, because they are required under special exception to get a survey map, which costs them another five hundred dollars.
Jim, have y'all looked at what he's got?
Yes, we have, we have. Yes.
What's y'all's recommendation?
Mr. Anderson. I've looked at this issue, I talked to Mr. Anderson about it, essentially, if I'm going to state your request, please let me know, because I haven't spoken to you, but essentially, the request is for a blanket special exemption, or exception for the entire neighborhood based off the fact that the homes were built.
And with the exception that, I don't believe it should be a special exception, the way it's stated in the LDR right now, I believe that this signature on this document is the special exception.
I would agree that the homes that were built within the ten-foot setback, essentially they're at seven and a half foot, give or take. There's nothing that the city can do about that now. They are essentially, when the flat was approved by the city, it was granted a special exception, or variance, or any other number of terms we could use. The issue I have for the city, and I went through the LDRs, I talked to Mr. Anderson, is for special exemptions, or exceptions to be approved. For show to two point three, there are certain items that must be followed, and the two point three starts off by saying, "A special exception shall not be granted by the planning board unless and until the following requirements and procedures have been met." There's no way for, number one, it doesn't address this board addressing that issue and discusses the planning review board. Number two, there's no way, there's not any evidence before this board to follow through with the requirements that are set forth in the LDR. In addition, if you give a blanket exception, I don't know how you could word that appropriately to cover all possible entities, because if somebody wants to build sixty-foot high, it may not be the setback, that's the problem, it's the height, that's the problem. If you look at all one which this, what this is, there's a density requirement, it's more than forty percent. I believe that the, that there's no way to adequately address this issue with a blanket exception without running into future problems similar to the problem. exception without running into future problems, uh, similar to the problem we have now. When we approve this at the time, it essentially just gave a variance of exception. In addition, I think Mr. variance request in the future. I understand the plight of these individuals. I'm not commenting on refunds of the money. I certainly made it clear in my discussion to Mr. Anderson that I think, for the most part, most of any request under either variance or special, uh, exception by these individuals that own homes inside this platted neighborhood should be approved, for the most part. But for the city to give a blanket exception when there's a set of rules to be followed, either under the variance, two-point-one-four, or two-point-one-three special exception, we would be ignoring our legislative process.
So, essentially, we'd be violating our own orders.
Okay. And I am not asking for a special exception. I am not asking for a variance, okay, under the LDR. I'm asking for acknowledgement that the City Council, prior to you, has already approved. So, no approval is required by you, through this document, and their signatures, and their commissioner meeting, to allow this to happen. I don't believe, and I'm not a lawyer, so I can, uh, that anything else would be necessary to address the issue at nowadays times. To me, right now, every home that has a seven-and-a-half, uh, foot inset on each side has an acceptance by the planning map to go seven-and-a-half feet for an addition to their home. If it's an auxiliary building or something, I believe that's outside of that, because there are different requirements on those. But has an attachment to their house, because it says "all structures," that it is, right now, legally acceptable for them to build seven-and-a-half feet without acceptance from the city. Right now, the planning board is requesting the special exception. I believe it is not necessary to do a special exception or variance, in this case, with the approval of the board.
Are you on the planning board?
Yes.
I knew you were on both boards. So, is it the wishes, and are you representing the planning board tonight?
I cannot do, represent the planning board without going to the planning board first. This is only based on the fact I received a certified letter in the mail stating the special exception for my neighbor, and I cannot vote on the planning board for this issue either.
Can you give me an idea of what the wishes or the feelings of the planning board would be?
Uh, that I cannot address, because I have not talked to them. I have not sat down with them. So, basically, like you guys are, we can't sit down and have a meeting separately, behind closed doors, to address it. I will address it to the chairman of the board.
Who is that?
Uh, Jay Risch.
Okay. I would be more comfortable at least hearing from the planning board. Because this is all new to me.
Understand. But still, I'm under the thoughts, I don't want this to end up the Field of Dreams. And going time after time, I mean, we have the signatures of the City Commission. They approved that. At the time, they were the approval authority. There was no planning board. We're talking two thousand and five.
I'm sorry. I'm not trying to be-
That's all right. Go ahead.
Adversary with you at all. I would agree that the board did approve that. Did not approve any, that being the plat. Did not approve any add-ons or anything like that. Again, I think you're, uh, a controversy with your own LDRs, if you give a blanket authority to add-on with that seven-and-a-half foot.
Was this plat prior to the LDR's creation?
The plat was done in two thousand and five. Your new LDR was done in two thousand and eight. I think this is a worthy, uh, exception to be considered by the planning board on there, and I would recommend it be approved. It's just that when you do a blanket on there, you have, you just don't know what the future holds.
And that's kind of the feeling that I have, you know? It should be on a case-by-case basis.
But I think the one that's coming before the planning board, I would stand up there and I would say, "I would recommend approval." And I would say that the houses that are built are a confirmed standard, because they were approved by the board. But I have to agree with the city attorney that once you expand beyond that footprint of the initial plat and the initial houses being home, you just don't know what the future holds.
And that was, my initial concern was, if this was, if this was platted after the LDR, we made a mistake. But we did not. We wrote an LDR after this to correct things moving forward. So, everything that was already built in two thousand and five is fine. Uh, you, but if you go to add-on, you have to follow the LDR requirements.
There are other subdivisions out there as well that this could, you know, we could run across in the future, and then we'd be held to those. So, I mean, I understand.
Jim, let's just follow our own-
If that's the right thing to do, though, that's the right thing to do. I mean, I don't believe there are many people on Bridgeport planning to expand. I don't believe they can go, based on the plot, to go above the sixty-five feet, or thirty-five direction for the house. But, but you get what we're saying about a blanket statement like that, you know? You could get any other subdivision that says, "Well, hey, you know, I'd like to build an extension, or make my house a little bit wider." Then what? You know, it really does open up a can of worms to like to leave it on a case-by-case- Actually, prior to nineteen ninety-five, there is a statement in the LDR that actually does that for you. Prior to ninety-five, it's acceptable. So, a lot of the older homes that only have a seven-foot and need a ten-foot are accepted already, because they're prior to nineteen ninety-five. I have not had ample time to research this. This just showed up- I've had a lot of time. Being on the planning board, I've had a lot of time to research. But, I mean, if we come down to it and be able to research it further, maybe on the best way to approach it, since it, it has been approved. I would address to Mr. Risch, because I can't address the board, and I will not be voting, that they turn it back over to you guys, because of the authorization on the plat map by the City Commissioners. Okay? So, like, to me, that process should go away. The people should not be burdened with payment of three hundred dollars, then the eight hundred dollars to meet that goal, to go to them, have it sent it right back over here.
Let's go through the planning board, and then if we need to look at it further, let's see what they say about it. We'll, we'll address it again if we need to.
We can do that. I just think that the potential, because right now, they would have to pay another five-hundred-dollar fee to do a survey for their property. And I've asked them to hold off for right now, until I was able to address the board for their situation, which is somehow affected with all the rest. But if it falls back to the commissioners again, there is the potential for a higher payment.
Well, I think it'd be fair to say, if, if it turns out at the end of this, that we looked at it improperly, and they should not have been imposed the fees, that I will support refunding the money to the, to the homeowners.
Understand. Yeah. Well, and I, I agree with what you're saying, but I don't believe it's necessary. And based on our procedures now, you can take your statement and say, "Yes, we went to the planning board. We got back to the City Commissioners. We followed our process. We do not have to refund them." I think that's wrong. I think if we find that it has been previously approved, and they are allowed to have the seven-and-a-half foot, whether it goes to the planning board or not, they should be reimbursed all fees associated to having to submit the documents. Okay? Any other questions? You look like you've got a question.
Just, no, just need more time.
I need time to read it. I understand. And I've had a few more days. And if you guys want more time to review it and discuss it again, uh, I'd be more than willing to accept the fact, to postpone the planning board meeting for a week. Yeah? Because we can do a special, a special meeting. We don't have to have it specific. You can request an extension to that for you guys' review of another week, and then we can go from there. But that's your guys' call. I know it's kind of a last-minute thing. I have been in discussion with Jim. And I know, I think he's talked to you some on the phone.
Jim, I'm gonna tell you, going blank, I think you need to move forward with the planning board, based on the attorney's advice.
Based on his advice? Okay. I just, I think it's wrong that we're charging citizens for something they shouldn't have to do that's been approved. And if it does come through and the, and the board approves it, that puts you, I think, into a different aspect of the legal binding, that you're charging them for something that has already previously been approved.
Well, if everybody wants us an exception, they have to pay the fees.
The exception is already approved. That's what I'm trying to say. It's not the fact that they don't want the exception. If the documents weren't there, they'd be more than willing to pay it. They are willing to pay it. The fact is, is we should, we shouldn't be charging them as a city, when we have the approved document that says they don't have to. I mean, it's an undue cost to the citizens that want to make this go on. But, so.
Thank you, Jim. Let's take it to the planning board, and maybe they'll see they don't need a special exception. When you present all this to the planning board, maybe they'll just say, you know, "Okay."
Well, and to me, that's gonna be a waste of time, because the city attorney said you should.
Right.
So, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have nothing further under the city attorney.
That's it? All right, Jim?
Yes, sir, Mayor. The, Adam, we, first time we were talking about moving up Mr. Bausch to up to the front, we didn't speak tonight on the services agreement and the grant.
Thank you. You prepared me earlier to sit around the agenda. Originally, when we rescheduled me to come back tonight, I was just talking about services agreement. Since, I'm getting two weeks ago, engineers had a chance to finalize his plans and kind of the real process, instead of the rough order management we were talking about earlier. Um, the earlier discussion, we expected the grant to cost about five-hundred-eleven-thousand dollars, or something less. And there'd be money in there for some admin money, and to get adequately compensated by how much more that would be, we wouldn't know until we had the numbers. The numbers that actually came in, came in higher than that five-hundred-eleven-thousand benchmark. Five-hundred-twenty-seven-thousand. Five-hundred-eleven-thousand is the highest you can go with the, um, number of households we have, and the rubric they have for judging, that we go from plus-twenty points in that category, uh, ending under five-hundred-eleven-thousand, to minus fifty. So, it's a seventy-point differential, absolute job killer. Um, so, we're looking at a situation where the current engineer's estimate is, exceeds that benchmark by seventeen thousand dollars, sixteen thousand dollars. And the city would need to offer to kick in some in the narrative, knowing that the engineer's estimate is this number, what we're shooting for is this number, you know, the actual ask, the CDBG's ask. Um, this can't be, can't be over five-hundred-eleven-thousand. Therefore, you, you can do that math and show it on the papers, but in the narrative, we have to show how you're gonna pay for it, and your other services. So, if you're to proceed with the grant as an engineer drawing, and drawings as drawn, you have to be indicated you're gonna pay the additional for construction. Now, we all know it's the engineer's estimate. Sometimes the bits come in higher, sometimes the bits come in lower, so that's a fluid number. Um, we still are already committed to twenty-five thousand for engineering services during construction, um, but we are totally off the map now with the administration fees. And in the, in the meeting weeks, I've talked with, uh, the current director at the ARPC, and we went over some of the past performance, realized that we've lost money on practically every job we've done at scale, with the fifty-two thousand, which normally comes from a six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant. Doing it to additional services that had come in during the scope of, the North Flotsam Development Center, required a land use amendment to get that to work. Turned out the land grant wasn't through its own, so we got that land use amendment changed. Some of the, the last grant that we did for water was postponed two times of our doing. But we kept adding admin costs as we went through the front-end effort twice, and then found out that that came in lower than the six fifty. We still got our eight percent, which was, puts down into the low forties for remuneration. So, we, you know, we, we haven't said, "Well, we have to give you a change order for our contract." And, but moving forward, uh, we realize that we're no longer a state, a state-supported agency. We're still a quasi-state agency, but since the current governor's administration, we haven't received any state funding directly. And those are the kinds of funds that we used to use to supplement our, our, our grant work when things fell short. We talked about it, I mean, we realized that fifty is about what we need to ask for to do admin. So, we look forward to a grant like this. We really put a narrative appropriately, and we said, "Grant funding, five-hundred-eleven-thousand dollars, twenty-five thousand for, um, engineering services, and fifty for admin." And put shit about, I think that might be a, ninety-two thousand into, so you'd be into it for ninety-two thousand to get five-hundred-eleven. The fact is that the streets that are left to be done are such a low density, you're gonna be in a situation for the rest of the streets to decide to be done. The remainder of C, B Avenue, and probably the three little short streets on the east end, um, because of the houses per linear foot of sewer pipe aren't just aren't that dense, the number of occupied houses, put it that way. So, you're gonna, you're gonna face a situation as you look forward to, and probably the next one you requested, a year and a half, excuse me, is gonna have the same situation. There just won't be enough, um, density for linear foot sewer, uh, to get the numbers you have, or where you're fully grant supported. So, I guess the situation, it's the same package, it's a different wrapping pack. Before, we just kinda, I think the last contract we submitted, your signature was, you know, to supplement whatever shortfall there was, up to fifty thousand. But now, there's not even a shortfall. Now, it's just, for our services, twenty-five for the engineer on top of any that you might have to kick in for the, to complete the project. Current estimate shows that is about a sixteen thousand dollar deficit.
How much?
Sixteen.
Sixteen thousand?
For the construction.
Uh-huh.
And the seventy-five thousand dollars worth of engineering and admin.
We got to pay that?
That would be out of his pocket. This is budget time, so any of yes or no?
Can you hear that?
Right. We do have the flexibility in that budget to cover that difference, uh, but it's just a matter of-
Bruce, then, how much do you say we've been talking about coming up with? We got twenty-five thousand dollars already committed as a max to go into the grant to help our planning. You said another seventy-five, man?
Uh, excuse me, another fifty in admin, and another sixteen in construction. If there is coming at that number, that estimated number of five-hundred-twenty-seven-thousand.
That's the number right in place? By now, it's seventy.
It won't change. By twenty-seven, forty-seven. So, but I think this is a situation you're gonna face in the next two grants it probably will take to finish that neighborhood. You want more than to finish C, and then do B, at about the same relative density, and now the ones that finish the three streets over on East End. You have the same low-density problems.
On July seventeenth, you kinda indicated to us that this is a long shot for even getting approved. Is that still your belief?
It's, well, it's not in the, it's not as much of quality, because if we had the right numbers, we'd have a plus-eighty-five in that category, instead of a plus-one.
You've done a lot of these in your professional opinion. What are our chances of getting approved?
You never know. Last year, um, last cycle, they went through, none of the home improvement, or the home prepared grants that came in qualified. None of them. They had to go out and do a re-submit for all of those guys, because, because of technical issues with their applications, they, none of them matched. Ended up finding other funds, and they funded everybody who submitted it. So, you don't know who is going to fail on their application based on technical aspects, how far down the list they might go.
Well, Bruce, if I'm just being honest, I'm sitting here feeling like I've just been, been hoodoo, and had the old bait and switch pulled on me.
I understand. It's an embarrassing situation for me, but, you know, we, we did the, the best shot of giving you the numbers last week before we had the engineer estimate. And it's only because in the, it was early weeks of June, that we finally decided, or realized, that what we thought we were gonna do was just avenues, B and C. B and C. what we thought we were going to do was just avenues, B and C, between two streets, wasn't going to cut it, just wasn't enough plan business there.
Right now, you're leaving us with two options. Either we abandon ship now and we definitely don't get the grant, or we go however much more in the hole, 16,000, you said?
Well, 16,000 for construction plus extra charge for professional services.
So we're going to have to come up with a substantial larger amount of money. We just balanced the budget this morning. What are you doing this to me?
I should have been here yesterday.
So we're talking $116,000? 75, 25?
No, sir. 25, 15, 17.
25, 15, that's 75.
And 17, or whatever the shortfall might be, the construction. If there is.
92.
And what have we budgeted for?
So far, what we've budgeted for was $25,000 or max to get some additional forms.
So it was $67,000 that we got to come up with.
Mayor was right about the numbers, 160, but I just can't imagine.
It's 25, 15, 17.
About 92, I think.
92, yes, sir.
You have the flexibility in the sewer budget to shift a capital item to cover that, it's just a decision as to whether we want to absorb that additional cost for the admin and for the construction. We have the flexibility in our capital budget to shift those dollars.
How much do we owe you if this grant does not go through?
I have to go back and look at the language of the grant. I think it was that if the city decided not to, we would get the cost to date. I don't remember that exact wording.
If the city decided not to move forward, or if we were...
Decided to not submit.
What if we submitted it, but we were not approved?
I think that's a gray area.
Well, how's it worked in the past?
In the past, we've just taken our lumps.
Well, that's the way it was explained to me, that you wouldn't have any monetary gain. I have a couple of questions. Did I hear you correctly in saying you've done several jobs for the city of St. Joe, and you did not make any money at all on those jobs?
We were compensated, it wasn't enough to pay time and charges.
Yeah, so you made money, but you didn't make enough money?
Correct. Any consultancy would go like, that kind of thing, but we're not a...
How many times do you have to go through that process? In my mind, it would be if you were in a business and you gave me a price to do a job, and you didn't make a profit, or you didn't make enough of a profit, you would go back and rethink your bidding process and your cost, and then the next time you came to work for me, hopefully you would have learned something. And, you know, according to what I heard, you said you've done several jobs, and you feel like you haven't been paid substantially enough profit margin, and now you want to come after multiple jobs and ask the city to pay you an additional, how much was it? $70,000 or $50,000? And to me, it doesn't matter if it was $15,000, I think that would be on you, not on the city. So that's my fault, is if you need more money on a job, you ask for more money at the beginning of the bidding process, not when we're well into...
If I could. This isn't a bidding situation, and then the remuneration...
And I use that term loosely, when you priced it, priced it out.
I don't price it. It's TDVG, and they'll say 8% is our maximum.
8% is the max, I understand.
So based on the usual maximum the city can ask for, 650, our maximum has always been $52,000.
Could you have, when you priced it out, could you have included language to say that if it doesn't reach that level, then you would be compensated, much like what you're asking for now? Could you have put that in the language to begin with?
Probably could have, and in the past, had we not been a public agency, if we were private, if we were a private consultant, we aren't state-funded, be clear. We are not state-funded.
You used to get some kind of funding from the state, I believe, is it? And now you don't get it, and really, you're looking for a source to make up for that loss. I mean, I understand that part.
Not quite. In the past, when we had those losses, it floated into over there. If we were a private consultancy, each one of those prior years, we would have said, you know, we actually need, as the city, an additional, as an engineering purpose, an extra profit. You know, we have a change of scope, we say we'd like to put in a change order and ask for approval, and goes over to the board and say, okay. And I was just trying to perform the front, that this grant has gotten itself into the window, that there is not enough funding in it, and you could reduce the ask even further, put the 50 back in. Then you'd have more construction dollars, which is how you slice that pie.
Well, my other question, I think is more for Jim. I understand that this is, you're with the Appalachia Regional Planning Council.
Yes, sir.
Are there other people offering this service to the city in the area, or is this the only group that does this type of projects?
There are.
Has the city used other groups for this type of work?
Not for this specific grant, as I've been...
But there are other options?
There are other consultants that do it. We're one of the two or three regional planning councils that do RFPG grant work. Well, I've done, there are several independents, and those cases at the beginning of the process, like last November, you would go out for bid, or ask for proposals, and they either come in or out right about the amount of money that is available, 8%.
Right, they're all going to ask for the cap of 8%.
And they're only bargaining powers, how many days per week they say they're going to spend in your office working there, which is all conjecture at the beginning.
I understand.
Bruce, are you doing this under the regional planning council, or are you doing it under your own? Because I know you're venturing out at one bar.
I'm OPS with the planning, with the planning council. Technically, I retired from the state, but we have wanted to continue serving the communities that we do serve. I work with TDVG, with Jefferson County, and for St. Joe, have for St. Joe since my year paid state. Yeah, I know you first started with Mayor's aid, but this is what's running, only in Darvis. Pretty much like that.
Bruce, can I ask a question later? Bruce, trying to figure out the numbers here. Okay, we have a maximum of $650,000 we can ask for the CDVG grant, right?
Could ask for.
Could ask for, okay. We've already placed $25,000, we said that we would use CDVG, that's $675,000. The numbers we came back from construction costs today, clearly from loan claim, was what, $527?
Yes.
So $527, that's only $527,000. Okay, your portion was going to be $52,000?
Yes.
Okay, and the engineering cost is the only other thing we have factored into that, so are you doing this to try to get us more points for the grant?
Exactly.
That's where everybody's confused, and I was confused too, Bruce, is that there's still money that you could apply for, I mean, from loan, but this would give you more points if you put in the $75,000, is that what you're...
There is a table, I have two sheets here, you can pass them around. There's a table, and the scoring criteria, box D.
So this isn't hard cost money that's going away? If it don't get approved for the grant, we'll keep that. There's only a certain portion, the difference to make up your $52,000 that we're going to lose either way. Is that correct?
I would estimate that there's a certain cost that it may cost to construct and ask demand construction for any kind of services and for engineering. That's that last box D, you can see, it's all based on the operator, the number of households, that's a fixed number, change the 32, so when you start dividing, you're asking for by 32, you drop down those point boxes, and you go from plus 20 in our paints to minus 50, to minus 75, minus 90, it's just the same job, which, when you put in half the $1,000 worth of, for 12,000.
I think I just want to get staff and ask for a recommendation.
From what, from what I was just saying, I knew after, I'm trying to understand.
You can tell us not to, I mean, I'd be fine with...
The way I understand it, what he's explaining here, because that was news to me too, about the $75,000 we're returning to come at, but if I'm understanding this correctly, the grant is enough to cover our chances are not good because of the density levels and the number of people that actually live in that area that may or may not qualify. But that $75,000 of additional money you're telling us to help us with our ranking system to get additional points, is that correct?
Correct.
So that's what you've got to make a decision on. Do you want to come up with the extra money to actually, to pay in, right now the city committed $25,000? You're asking us to put in an additional, how much?
50 plus extra, extra 16.
So you put in $25,000 that you have not so good of a chance, do you put an additional $50,000 in to get a little bit better chance?
You get it back unless the grant's approved.
That is correct. If the grant is not funded, so is that what, is that what you're asking for?
Yes. And we can put in the narrative, any way you want to do it, that our fee would be in the grant as a paper item, and your construction cost ask is less, you pay X number, that's the big unknown, the big construction big cost.
I think the board needs to know how much money they need to put in to commit for the budget for this year. They've committed $25,000, you're asking for an additional 50 to give us, how many more points, how many more points would that give us?
Additional 60, 70. 50 in the 16 over construction.
That would increase your points, increase your points, 70 points.
How much?
70 points.
70 more?
Go from a minus 50 in that category to positive 20.
Okay.
We need to put in more money, go up to 40 points, but, I think, done in mass at last meeting, but it's just...
But the money all comes back if we don't get approved. Correct?
Correct.
And we have the flexibility in the budget to do, to shift that $66,000.
There you go.
That makes a lot more sense.
I'm asking for staff's recommendation, that's where I'm at.
What do you recommend, Jim?
If you're looking for, you bank for your bucks, that's the way I would consider this on this, okay? You're looking to get $650,000 with the work for the city for sewer replacement on two and a half streets, basically, off there, for the total amount out of pocket, now it would go to $70,000, Bruce?
66.
66, so that's a pretty good return, return on your investment, if you want to do that.
If Mike can make it work, I'll make the decision.
We got a question, bud?
We can shift the money in this budget, yes.
And I want to be clear on one thing, though, because definitely there's some confusion. You're not asking for an increase in payment for the services rendered.
Absolutely not.
Okay, that was my misunderstanding.
It's about the same level we had with the loan.
That's the way he presented it last week.
The last few grants, we're about the same, because you have gone up in your...
Because I'm going to stick with the theory, if you want more money, you ask at 40, start the job.
Correct.
Pretty so.
In the engineering world, when there's a change in what you find in the field, you find that there's limestone in two feet of surface, and plastic, you ask for more money.
I understand that function.
Mr. Mayor, we got staff's recommendation.
I'll second. Second motion, okay. All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Much care, sir. We'll get this grant in by Monday.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
It's definitely needed, the sewer in that area, it definitely needs to be...
Absolutely. Mayor, the next item we have is in reference to the road buy money. We did have one item that does not qualify on there, that is the water line replacements for downtown. So that leaves you about $97,000 available for some type of pavement project. So we need to decide, what do we want to submit for that $97,000? I heard several different things out there, engineers have covered everything, staff. So basically, I think, I think we have at least two weeks, I think the county will be okay, we've given us two weeks on there. So our recommendation, our staff recommendation will be, within the next two weeks, let's get with staff, and let's figure out what our options are to spend that $97,000 on.
I spoke with Jim about that this afternoon, and it was not a whole lot, but if we can throw a couple of things out there, get the place a price for...
Don't give us a list, we'll price it out for you, and we'll bring something like you in.
Jim, something unclear, though, we talked about possibly using some of that $206,000 from the PSJRA to handle that. Are we still going to go forward with this project, if this won't be out of road buy money?
That's the next step, that would be the next caveat we need to talk about. Right now, what we have is, we have the water line materials and the boards that we have bid out, okay? We're in the process of working with the state for the bonding fund to give us a loan versus grant match, okay? 55% grant, 45% loan is what we're, the numbers we're looking at right now. That equates to about $90,000, okay, basically what you had out of the road buy money. So at this point, you have a couple of things you can decide on, okay? We need to, we need to see about awarding those two bids pending approval from SRF, but the funding mechanism, right now, if you did nothing, it would be rolled into your existing loan with the state for the bonding fund. It does not have a prepayment penalty on it, you could look at your budget or any time in the future and pay down on that principal if you wanted to, okay? Or you could find another source to say, okay, we're not going to borrow any money altogether, we're going to go ahead and pay on that principal, that amount of those materials and those boards. So that's what we got to decide. But I think, I would highly recommend that we replace those lines downtown. I think they're old, we're to the end of this phase in our project of replacing water lines, that's the last step.
Do you have a motion, or...
Yes, we do.
To go ahead and move forward with the bonding loan?
Yes, sir. I would recommend that we get approval from the board to award those two RFPs, that was the RFP 2011, 2018-11, and 2018-12 for the boards and the materials, pending approval from SRF. And at this point in time, what I would do is just let it run its course, roll it into the loan itself, and I see you're working through the voting process, if y'all tell us you want to spend X, send X number of dollars to its principal, we can have it in the court.
Is that your motion?
Everybody give up a laugh? I think it's great. I'll make a motion.
My second, Mr. Lawrence, Senator Ashbrook. All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Much care, sir.
The other benefit to that is we currently have that open SRF loan for water, and it keeps it active so that we still have those funds that are available to apply toward those Long Avenue projects when we, when we get ready for it. So we're telling the state, we're still using that money, keep it there for us.
Any other questions on that? If we can, if we get a list of items that we want to be considering for pavement and work for that.
The next item we have is in reference to Triumph Fund update. Commissioner Ashbrook, I'm going to talk to you tonight about it.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I've spoke to a couple of people, is Jason here tonight? Jason Cho? He was going to come and give us a little bit of an update.
What's that? I thought he's going to want for four, that you've got two strikes.
Basically, what I, from what I understand, small communities are underrepresented on the board, very few, small cities and counties included, aren't even going after these Triumph Funds. And it is a 15-year term right now, who knows when the legislature can pull it back away from us? I think we need to strike fast now while there's money. And there's agencies out there that'll do all that work for you, and there's little if no upfront money, you know, they get paid administrative fees when the grants are approved. And I would like to get the support of this board to possibly go out to an RFQ process and look for one of these agencies to represent us.
I talked to a guy about it, he broke it down, saying that, you know, smaller cities look for smaller projects instead of like the port and the dry dock, you know, they look at smaller, smaller things that they can do with the Triumph line, which we can help MLK certain projects, certain parks, or, well, he said that, basically, if we as a city, as city commissioners, agree with certain things, that it's money out there for smaller projects besides the projects that the county is putting together. So I think it'll be interesting for us to try to go after some of that money.
I mean, there's been talk about Port Theater wanting to partner with the Downtown Redevelopment Agency on a grant, definitely help out Jester Davis and his cause over there as well. We just got to get the people, get a team behind us that is going to put these grants together, and maybe rate them what they think is the most likely to get funded, and let's start going after it. There's millions of dollars out there, we just have to ask for it.
And really, when I talked to the guy, we really missing out, just sitting back and not going after this money. It's there, let's get together and try to get some of it, why is it available?
Don't forget, there's two components to starting it up. The group that you're speaking about is actually step two. Step one, if you'll remember, we were told that there's funding available for the smaller cities to have the startup or an admin person, I believe it was $120,000.
It was actually 200, and this guy actually said that he would give that grant for us.
Well, from the way that Jason explained it to me, we could have a local person be our startup, our liaison, to work with the larger group. And I remember he spoke about a group out of Louisiana. Well, we don't need to burden our staff with doing the... Well, we don't need to burden our staff with doing the startup, there is a lot involved. But we can apply for startup admin funding and maybe have someone or have a group of people that we can look at that would do a good job in that and then have that person be the liaison for the city and working with the group that we identify. So I don't think we need to forget about that person that can be the, the person on the ground representing the city and working and finding the right group. That's the way I understood.
Yeah, I just feel navigating the Triumph Grant, it's nice to have somebody who's done them, gotten them approved. Maybe not an RFQ, but maybe getting one of these people to help us out with that first step at no cost, saying, hey, we'll help you do this, you know, and then we can bring them on to do the grants in the future. I mean, if the board would be okay with it, you know, we could put together a list of these organizations and have them come and talk to us about what they can offer, what they say the first step should be, you know, that, someone that's gone through the process. I mean, I could bring in the gentleman that I was talking to and he would be glad to speak with us. And that's one that Jason actually recommended that we talk to. He said he's done great work on, on the committee, everybody up there likes him, he gets his projects approved. I'd love to hear what he has to say.
Yeah, and we can ask him, has he dealt with someone in a smaller city that was working as the startup admin person?
And there hasn't been one of those issued yet.
Because if we could do that, I would hate to lose the opportunity to give a public, a local person the opportunity to tap into the Triumph Fund as well and to work on behalf of the city.
If you'll give me two-hundred thousand dollars, I'll quit today.
I spoke to him as well, he said he comes.
Why don't we just, can we just plan to have him show up at a meeting in the future and talk to us, talk to us about it?
All right. The next item we have tonight is the Health Department, Healthy Community Awards.
Hello?
Hello.
Ms. Lane, can you hear me in the back? Okay. All right. My name's Sarah Hines, I'm the administrator for the Florida Department of Health in Franklin and Gulf Counties. I'm here to talk about the two thousand eighteen Healthy Community Champions Recognition Program. So each year, the Florida Department of Health recognizes cities and counties across Florida making significant strides to create healthy environments for their residents. And for the two thousand eighteen cycle, the city of Port St. Joe has been recognized, so congratulations. Yay! The city has been recognized for improvements in several categories, access to the bike trails that we have, a growing farmer's market, involvement in community preparedness response efforts, and participation in community health improvement projects overall. Working with residents, attending partnership meetings, showing you care about their concerns and their priorities, it really matters, right? Sometimes it can be challenging, and, but I've been to many Saturday workshops and have seen your faces there. And this matters because we're both in the business of community improvement. I'm in community health, but it takes a community, it takes community challenge to improve community health. To be healthy, you have to be in the business of long, healthy lives, but you also have to have a quality of life, right? And I just wanted to break that down real quick. So fifty percent of your health relates to two areas. Twenty percent of it is the clinical care, that's like access to care, quality of care. And then the other thirty percent is healthy behaviors, so that's fifty percent of your health, clinical care and healthy behaviors. Healthy behaviors are things like diet and exercise, alcohol and drug use, and tobacco use, and you might be wondering, well, how do I play into that? Well, actually, you guys have made a lot of strides there. If you can recall, you helped to implement a policy for tobacco-free parks where there's playground equipment. That was a big, big initiative. So the other fifty percent of your health, it comes from the other categories like your physical environment, the air quality of water, your housing, and social and economic factors like education, employment opportunities, income, family and social support, community safety, and these are really challenging areas to tackle. But I see you on those Saturday workshops trying to work at it, and I just wanted to say that I really appreciate that. So when we say that health starts where we live, where we learn, where we play, where we work, where we worship, it's because these are the areas that make a significant impact on our health. So I just wanted to thank you on behalf of the Florida Department of Health for your continued community response. And here's your, hang it somewhere really nice.
All right, you will do it, Jim.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, the next item we have, Mayor's Representative, Red Light, at the intersection of Howling 98 and First Street.
Yeah, I've talked to the chief about it and, and he's been in contact with DOT and we're gonna still keep talking to him, although I'm not satisfied with the way that light works. Both sides should work the same way, should be turning signals, turning left, one lane should be forward and right. Now, one side's that way, but the other side's not. And it's confusing to people, you backing up that line there, when you got people wanting to turn left, but they don't get a turn signal. So you may have five or six cars backed up there, next thing you know, you don't make the light. Road rage, some people anyway. But I, I really believe that need to come down, but the chiefs and I will get together and work on it.
The next item, Representative, is Community Garden Commissioner Life, still wanted to talk to you tonight about?
Yes, sir. Ms. Aines called me one morning saying that she wanted to try to get the community garden back, started back up. Washington Improvement Group had it before with Mr. Roy Lee Carter and they planted different vegetables, they got the kids out, the kids helped plant it. Everybody in the community just got together and planted crops and when it was time to pick them, they picked them, boxed them up, handed, took them to old people, people in need, you know, those that need, so I told Ms. Aines that I presented it before the board and we'll see what we can do about getting that, getting this garden started back. I haven't got in touch with Mr. Roy Lee Carter, I'm sure that, once I get. Oh, he ain't a county man, that boy. Yeah, he is, yeah. Is this the one they used to have at the school? Okay, they used to have one at school too, if kids helped, right? Yeah, they got one out to the elementary school, but this is gonna be on the north side by, I think, was that North Garrison? Yeah, North Garrison. It's a nice piece of property. Commissioner Quinn sent his inmates in there, they cleaned it up real good. So I think that it'll make the kids feel like they're doing something, get them off the streets a little bit. The older people in the community can, can come and join in and also it, it gives the people on the north side a, a, something like self-respect, self-motivation, something that they can drive by and say, hey, look, I helped do that, you know? Or the kids riding their bikes by and say, look, I helped plant that, you know? So I was, I was gonna get with Ms. Aines in the future and we're gonna try to get this thing started as soon as possible. I think we wanna get everything straightened up and start planting in the spring so that we can harvest us some vegetables, some greens and some squash before, when it's time, before the winter. So I appreciate if Commissioner could get on board with me.
Mayor, I, I love the idea, Commissioner, and honestly, if you can get a group together, you know, that wants to do this, I wouldn't have a problem, you know, putting a thousand dollars in the non-governmental organization category for a community garden.
How much money do you think you need?
I'm gonna need equipment.
Well, the equipment and seeds and we need, starting up money, we need at least five thousand plus dollars.
I got it.
Five thousand, because we don't have, we need all, what do you call it?
Tiller. You can rent some stuff. We can rent some, we can rent the tillers and things of that nature.
What do we have available now, Mike?
When I was running the Recreation Department, we, we had a tiller and I would go over and till the garden for them. I think we still have that tiller, I'm not sure, but we'll have to check with John to see if that still works. But I, but I believe we have a tiller.
That'd be, that'd be great, Mike.
Come on up.
Florida A&amp;M in Tallahassee has a community garden program. I think there's contact them, because they had one out there on, I think it's Greg Street or something, right by Washington Drive?
That's what we're talking about. They doing again? Mr. Roy, that's where Mr. Roy Lee, Mr. Roy Lee was getting all of his, that stuff from, from Florida A&amp;M. They, they give you. Yeah, they had a bid, I want you to have it. Yeah, they, they, they got a great program at, agriculture program at Florida A&amp;M and helps the community with that, that, things of that nature, so we'll definitely be looking into that. And what we'll do is, we'll just taper this to the next meeting, find out what we're gonna need and we'll, we'll go from there. Sounds good, Commissioner, sounds good. All right.
The next item we have, Representative, Core Park Lighting. Tonight, we talked about probably six, eight months ago, Mr. Kennedy's still working through trying to get some prices to do it. We have ten thousand dollars that we received from the Haddicks and from the Claylocks in reference to the property at the end of Seventh Street. That money was dedicated for that, so there's ten thousand dollars there for your consideration. Tonight, Mr. Kennedy has given a little bit of homework for you to look at the quotes that he did receive.
Well, Jim, I'll say, Mr. Kennedy did tell me that these aren't apples-to-apples quotes, that Current Solutions didn't bid exactly what we asked. It's a little bit different, he says it would work, but it's not what we asked for. Scott's Quality Electric actually did say that he would do everything that was in the bid. Current Solutions did not meet the requirements that Bill asked for.
I talked with Current Solutions and they told me they could not find the specific lighting that we were asking for. I don't know what it, the other guy found it or not, but he talked to the manufacturer and he said he had a lighting that would work, was equivalent to what they asked for the specs. That's why they went ahead and turned that in. And I think we'll go with a low bid myself.
I'm not saying we shouldn't, I just want to put that out there.
What, what type of lighting does this require?
I think it's to downlighten all the trees.
Tree lights and some other stuff.
I'd say it could make some bids, but it's a little, that, that probably.
Yeah, we got one, we got two bids, one meets, according to Bill's information, only one of the two bid out the job based on what he asked. And that second one that did bid it out is Scott's Electric and they came under the amount, correct?
That's what he did. This was not, to my understanding, this was not bid out, these are quotes on here with our formal bid, but Jester, according to the note that Mr. Kennedy did give to us this may have space.
Well, based on that, I'll make a motion that we accept the price or quote for Scott's Quality Electric and awarding the job.
All right, we had a motion on the floor about Commissioner Hartman, do we have a second?
Second.
So good for discussion, aye?
Only thing I've got, I, I would be for, I mean, if he, I'm all for the low bid. If they meant, I don't have it, but if they meant to price that, that particular product, I mean, they need to be, you know, we need to honor that. I would, I'd find out if we need to, and you said, you spoke to him?
Yeah, spoke with the head man there today, and what he told me. This bid, this bid from Current Solution, I, I still don't understand, why, why couldn't he have got the same thing that, the same lighting that Scott has? I mean, would it, would it make this amount go up if you get, would it make the amount that Current Solution bring, go, go up?
Yeah, I mean, that's a valid point, if we, if we could just do nothing with this today and go back to Current Solutions and say, we need you to do what, what we bid out, or what we asked you to do.
If he can come up with a, a lower bid, I mean, a lower, I mean, if he's, we're gonna pay, we're looking at this low bid, if he can do the same thing that Scott's Quality Electric can do for this amount, I mean, I don't see why we're gonna go with the low bid, but if Scott's gonna give us better quality and, and gonna do what the, what Bill asking, asking that we need, I, I think we need to go with Scott, so I think we need to, I need to look at this and go back and see, you know? I feel like we ought to get some more information. One guy said he couldn't find the lights, one guy said he did, now what, what's happening?
If somebody would direct him where or to find them or whatever, you know, he'd run them.
Well, he said he went to the manufacturer and the manufacturer said he didn't have them. So I wanna know how this other bid, where he, where's he getting his lights from? Was he getting what we asked for, is he getting some, some of the lighting what we got? I mean, I don't think Current Solutions was, the manufacturer told me they couldn't get it, if they can't get it.
Well, the way I look at it is two companies were asked to submit a quote. One followed the direction of the specifications and gave a price that fell within the limits. One was unable to give us an accurate price of what we asked for. That's how I look at it.
I look at it as spending a thousand more dollars, the way I look at it.
Well, but when they, when the other company updates their price, they're gonna end up being at a higher price and they're gonna be just sitting there waiting on another bid.
Well, if it, I'm not gonna, that's not the case of being increasing the price, that's...
It'll change its price.
Is it increasing?
Yeah, because of the lighting, that's what I think he's gonna have. He bid out on a cheaper lighting, of course, his price is gonna be cheaper.
Well, I mean, do we know that? Do we know any further cheaper price for the lights than Scott did? I mean, how do we know?
It says right here in the letter from Bill, it didn't say anything about a light, but it just says that it didn't meet our specifications.
It says a light, I've talked about it. Well, I definitely can't explain an extra thousand dollars of taxpayer money.
It isn't.
Just on a technicality, whatever y'all wanna do. We had a motion in the circuit, right? All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say no. No.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to go back and see what the lighting.
Back out.
No, well, no.
I mean, one man said he couldn't find the light now, I don't know. That they specified it yet, so I wanna go and, and, and just talk to both of these people and find out where this one found the lights at. It's not that I don't want anybody to have a, have the contract, just that.
I don't understand.
I can't see, I need to look at what Bill gave, what stipulation was that Bill gave them before I make a final decision. So we, I guess we'll go out and tell them we need a, a more, we need to know where these lights can be found at.
I think Commissioner Lance is right, that's the question we were saying too. We like to see these specs, what were those specs on, if you knew that, then you would know exactly, did they bid apples to apples or did they quote apples to apples? So we'll ask Bill to get you those specs for you.
Okay, just find out where the other guy found the specified lights at, that's, I mean, one guy said he couldn't find them, I don't know.
We'll get you some more information from Mr. Kennedy.
Okay, thank you.
The last item we have here tonight under due business is the Jones Home State Sewer, Mr. Deborah Lays wanted to talk to you tonight about. All right.
I'm Deborah and I live on Palm Springs Way, the Jones Home State area. And several of my neighbors are here with me tonight, will also wanna be talking to you. Basically, as just a quick background, we received a letter and I'm gonna quote to a couple of things in the first letter we received. It was from the city that they decided they wanted to run a sewer in the vicinity of our street and were interested in determining how many property owners with existing homes were interested in connecting to the sewer. were interested in connecting to the sewer. And the cost would be determined, what's the full scope of the work to be performed, what's determined. To me, that sounded like a survey letter, I don't know about you, it sounded like, who's interested in the sewer? We were told to contact the city if we were. Then exactly a month later, we get another letter that said, "We're running the sewer." And I thought, gee, most of my neighbors wanted to hook up to the sewer, but I found that strange because 75%, thereabouts, said the homes on Palm Breeze Way have less than five-year-old septic tanks. A lot of other homes, uh, people aren't like there for a couple months out of the year. They don't want to pay sewer bills either. So I said, "Well, I'm going to go ahead and do a survey and run a petition to see how many people actually do want the sewer and who doesn't." And when I did the survey, and I went to every home in our neighborhood at least five times to make sure I could hit them, I went weekends, I went nights, I went mornings, three to one were against having a sewer, and we're actually closer to four to one now, because I've managed to reach a couple more people. So I asked the, the city to do three things, to do a former, formal survey if they decide they want it, to determine, do we or don't we want a sewer? And if we don't, don't run it. And I also asked, under what law does the city of Fort St. Joe have to run a sewer to our street when we are not city residents, we're not within the boundaries of the city? So I noticed on the agenda that someone, I assume the city attorney, uh, included statute 381.00655 to address this question I had. That statute only tells what we will be forced to do if you run the sewer. We will be forced within 365 days to hook up to a sewer, even if we have a working septic. And if our septic breaks, we will have to hook up to the sewer, we can't repair it. But this statute does not address at all where you guys have the authority to run a sewer in an area that's outside of your jurisdiction. Um, that's what I wanted to know, is where you got the authority? We don't vote for you people. Um, also, I'm sorry, also in that statute, it said that you can grant a variance that we don't have to hook up within 365 days. However, why would you do that? We don't vote for you, we have no vote in this council. You're $12 million in debt for sewer, and you want people hooked up, and we have no rights whatsoever. We are not part of any community development district that I can find, we're not part of any county special sewer and water district that I can find, we have no vote there in any of, any organization to say, "We do or don't want a sewer." I think it's an overreach of the city's power, uh, to not even ask us. And a lot of my neighbors feel the same way, and I'm hoping several of them will come up and talk. Uh, this is a monetary cost, I mean, I spent $12,000 putting in my septic less than three years ago, now you want me to pay another $3,000 to destroy it, which I would have to do under state law, and money to hook up, to put in the grinders, you know? I, I know you were saying, "Well, we're going to help you a little bit," but it's still going to cost me over $3,000 to do this, plus it was going to change the tax assessment of my property as well. So this is not a, a small thing to us. A lot of us are senior citizens, retired, fixed incomes, like I said, others are just part-time residents, you know, this is, this is not something you can just say, "Hey, we're going to do it," you don't have any say. And that's all I've got to say, and I'm hoping that you will make the survey and not run the sewer if the residents don't want to run. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, I'm going to, uh, let Mike conclude, explain a little bit of this, as to what's going on and why it's happening and things like that, and if there's anybody already signed up for the sewer.
There's six.
Uh, we currently, through those surveys that we put out, our questionnaires asking citizens if they wanted to connect, we had six responses and had paid the fees to connect. Uh, we've started installation of the sewer in Jones Homestead on plantation, uh, and we plan to move to Sesta and so forth down the line. Uh, it was a $250,000 grant, we're doing that work ourselves with city labor, uh, we use that money to buy the material. Uh, I think we have 52 total customers that, that have paid to connect throughout the Jones Homestead area. Uh, we have grant availability for 13 more customers to connect at the reduced rate of $500, so $400 tap fee and $100 deposit, uh, and we give them the grinder pump. All of those 52 residents do have additional costs, they do have to pay a plumber, uh, to install the grinder pump on their property and to crush and fill their existing septic system. Currently throughout our system, uh, when we install a sewer line, we're not requiring that, that customers tie in in the 365 days, we're simply saying when your system fails and requires repair, uh, that, that the health department won't issue you a permit to repair your existing system, that at that time, you can, you're then required to tie in, uh, to the city sewer system. So that's currently how we handle sewer and new sewer lines throughout our system, uh, and that's what we've tried to convey to the, to the, uh, the residents of Jones Homestead.
How many, uh, areas do we service sewer to, outside the city limits?
Yep, uh, St., White City, St. Joe Beach, uh, Cape San Blas, uh, Jones Homestead, we're actively trying to come up with a funding for Beacon Hill, but we haven't secured that funding yet, so, uh, but that's the current.
Mike, but again, we aren't requiring, requiring them to hook up in a year.
No, no, we're just trying to con, convey to them that at this time, they have an opportunity to hook up through the grant for significantly less than the $6,000 fees that you would have to pay, uh, uh, if we didn't have the grant. So someone in the Cape right now that wants to tie in pays a $6,000 impact fee, tap fee, grinder pump and deposit, plus they have the $3,000 cost to, to tie, to install there, and that's ballparking those costs, those costs very. So with the grant, customers in Jones Homestead can tie in for ballparking again $3,500 as compared to $9,000.
Will you explain how far we're into the grant?
Uh, we, we've purchased the material, uh, we've started installation of plantation, I think we're about 65% done with plantation drive, so we're only in the first 15% of the whole project, but we have purchased the material, the grinder pumps for those 65 connections.
What is, what would be a negative impact if the sewer line was ran and you did not choose to connect? Understand that if you're, if you chose not to connect and there's no sewer line there, and let's say your septic tank, my brothers just went through this over in Parker.
Then, then we would be allowed to repair our septic tanks under state law, once a sewer's there, A, we can repair the tank, and B, if you do want to go against state law and say, "We're going to give you a variance that you don't have to hook up within 365 days," I would certainly want that in writing. I don't want you, you know, why should I believe you guys?
We have not.
No, that has not been on any letter.
If I give you a little bit of history on there, you know, what we did was, back in the early 2000s, we started running the sewer, we had a, a huge interest in sewer, we still get calls, we have about a new customer a day right now, people wanting to tie into sewer, so there's been an issue to try to find funding anywhere to run sewer. Since the beginning, there's never been an interest for the city to send out that letter to, as the statute requires under 1A3, 381.00655, which requires to send out a letter saying, "It is available, you must, uh, tie in within 365 days." There's never been an interest from any board that I've been a part of to send that letter out to the residents, saying, "You shall tie up in within 365 days," so that's never been in the news.
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I've seen what this board does, I don't trust people. I would love to see it happen.
Is it not a state statute?
It's a state statute, you're breaking state statute if you don't send that out.
Well, you're giving us a waiver, but not in writing.
We'll have to come up to the podium, people.
So back to my, my question.
Speak the truth, brother.
If, if the sewer line was ran and you...
I have to go. Reggie Patrick.
1A2 Palm Breeze Way. Ms. Deborah was speaking on mainly Palm Breeze Way.
Yeah.
Don't care about the rest of Jones Homestead, plantation, powder roads of White City, nowhere else, Palm Breeze Way, that's what this year is, that's what she brought forward here. Well, now, he gave some clarification, but he gave some clarification, but the statute does say that I will have to hook up if it's available. Publicly owned, uh, sewer system or investor type system, if it's available, you have to hook up. So you ain't got to tell me that I got to hook up, but the state is already telling me I got to hook up. So what am I going to do? Tell the state? Take off? Can't do it?
Yeah.
You don't have that authority. Anyway, y'all can do what you want, but know what you can do, and probably know what you're going to do. I'm asking you not to run it down Palm Breeze Way, so I'm just... You got, got, not even his house a year. In fact, it just don't make sense. Uh, if you could do a variance after variance after variance, it just tears up or something, but y'all not going to be here, somebody else is here. That's been, that's years. He's talking about the numbers, it ain't down our road, other places, older places.
So what, what, what do we do about the residents that do want, I mean, just tell them, well, they...
Well, what's it costing, what's it costing to run?
We have a grant for $250,000.
What's it costing to run?
We'd have to break that down.
You spend that, took 250, then you just quit?
That's true, so we have, we bid out all the materials, we'd have to give it to the public work department, see specifically where they're at.
So you don't know what it would cost you right now for it to run?
We do, but I don't have it with me, Mr. Grant, continue, he's not, unfortunately, he's not here.
Well, I can't answer that, but you should be able to, because if you start the project, you should know how to finish it, I'll say that much. And I'm not trying to be smart, I'm going to say, but once you start the system and Grantman is gone, and then you know there's a good possibility that you're going to continue, or could continue, or somebody wants you to continue, you need to know what you're getting into, so... How much money is it going to cost you to run the line down my road? I don't know. Is it going to be worth it? Some of the prices I hear in town, it's, it's like it might be worth it, the city, I think. I don't want to get into my, my personal stuff, but I am overloaded, I cannot afford it. And y'all don't want what's on my plate right now. Don't mean to be sharp towards any of y'all, but I, I'm just a little overwhelmed about when you own a piece of property, you don't own a piece of property. And the same as your house and your house, you understand easements, understand this. And we'll get into politics, but if, if a certain act was passed, uh, certain people had won and a certain act was passed, if you had a mud hole, it stayed a mud hole, you were not on, that'll get, there again, sure land, but it's not sure land. Today, yesterday, 12 years ago, nobody had a problem, I said. Now you want to tell me I can't have one? The guy that just bought the house last year, his stream of permit right out here, how you going to tell him? No good. But that's part of the statute, that's what you're telling, it don't matter what y'all say, part of the statute, root, of a root, unless you continue to do a variance, 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 variance. Right?
I'll give, I'll give my opinion of the statute, so if you get that, I will make sure you have your...
But I like to say, I'm just asking you not to run down Palm Breeze, I know people that want it, they want it, fine. If I do the dollar figure of, of per hood, then I might can tell you more about, there's, I know there's four people down there that, that wants it, you know, so, kind of what's already on the street. But that's not to say that if they weren't in this situation, they would come knocking on your door asking for it, but they didn't, they come asking for it, they only asked for it after we put it in a situation where pretty much got to. Anyway, I, I, all I'm asking is, don't bring it down Palm Breeze, that's all I'm asking.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Commissioner.
If you read the statute, it says 365 days after written notification by the owner of the publicly owned, investor owned sewage system, that the system is available, so 365 days notification that it is available, there's no hard 365 days, in addition, there are variances included, I'm not aware of the city requiring mandatory hookups anywhere. Additionally, if you look at subsection B, the legislature is trying, intentionally trying, not the city or anybody else legislator, is intentionally trying to do away with septic tanks where they can. It's a DEP issue, it's an issue I'm familiar with in my hometown of Bay County, it's all throughout the state. If you look at subsection B, it talks about the owner of an on-site sewage treatment disposal system that needs repair or modification to function in a sanitary manner must comply, and it goes on to say that, uh, must connect to available publicly owned or investor owned sewage system within 90 days after written notification from the department. So once their system fails and there is an availability, um, for publicly owned or investor owned sewage system, they must hook up. My conversation with Mr. Anderson is that the city's not making anybody hook up that doesn't want to at this point, to give the option, there's the subsidy, um, but it's not confused with 365 days. Um, I've yet seen anything, mandate from the city saying that 300, that anybody has to hook up within 365 days, I've yet seen anything that suggests that the city hasn't followed state law. Now, whether the city...
Rebuttal, rebuttal, I mean, nobody said that, sir, you're misconstruing.
Whether the city desires to go for, go for this project or to, how they wish to handle this issue, that's obviously within the purview of the city, but if, my understanding of this issue is of, at least of obtaining the funding and getting the project was approved prior to my coming on board, um, certainly within the purview of this board to do so, uh, and this board could mandate 365-day hookups, uh, hookups within 365 days, but as, this date, I'm not aware of such action happening, and I've asked Mr. Anderson, and he's told that it has not happened.
What do you, what do you take from subsection C where it talks about a variance? Says the local government can, can, uh, give a variance, is that saying that they can waive the requirement to hook up?
As long as the on-site system is functioning properly and satisfying the conditions of the operating permit.
So as long as they have an operating septic tank, we can go with option C or C and, and not require any type of, uh, hooking up?
Yes, sure, and I didn't mean to interrupt you with that.
And we have that now, we just don't have it in writing.
That's correct.
And I, I think we need that in writing, I think that would put some of these people at, at ease at least until the time they had a, a malfunctioning septic tank.
Yes, sure, and I apologize for saying that while you're speaking, but under subsection 1A, the trigger, which is what you're looking for in law, how do we, and you have a background in law, fortunately, you know, how do we get from step, point A to point B, what does that trigger? And the trigger in this case is the notification that the system is available for connection, that's when 365 days starts to tick. Um, I, you know, far, you know, I don't, that, as far as education of the public, that's within the board's purview, not mine, but my interpretation of the statute is that variance is not needed because there's not been a 365-day notice. Certainly, education and a number of other things probably would be, you know, a great thing for the city, uh, for its citizens, but until the 365 days notice letter sent out, there's no variance needed.
I got you.
All right, you want to add?
Come on up. Yeah, my name's Mike Holcomb, I live in 154 Palm Breeze Way, I also own a home at 146 Palm Breeze Way, it has a three-year-old septic tank in it, that y'all want me to tear out and connect to a system that nobody...
to a system that nobody on our street wants.
I mean, you say somebody's gonna pay the fees, so somebody does want it.
We have six connections scheduled for.
How many residents are on Palm Breeze Way?
I don't have those figures in front of me.
Thirty-seven residents. So, very few, the majority don't want it. The minority want it. And y'all start shoving sewage down our throats. We don't want it. We have no representation up here. We can't vote against you. We can't recall you. Why didn't y'all come to us when y'all applied for a grant to get this money, saying y'all want sewage? We're not gonna spend this money in North Port St. Joe, where y'all need to repair sewage. Why? Why are you putting sewage on us and not taking the city of North Port St. Joe, where they need repairs to the sewage system? Is there a good reason to put it on us? We're all, we're all.
What's the grant called, for its expansion?
I don't have the grant in front of me. It's a $250,000 federal appropriation, state appropriation, legislative appropriation.
When did y'all make the decision to run it up Palm Breeze Way?
Several years ago with advocacy.
But you never called anybody on Palm Breeze Way to whether or not we wanted sewage? Is that the way this government works? Just throw it at the people, even though we're not residents of the city? I mean, this is bull, that y'all are trying to throw this down our throats. Would y'all stand by and take it if it was y'all's neighborhood? Would you?
I don't know unless I'd be putting that position to change, sir, if I couldn't imagine.
Well, I've got a significant investment in property and houses out there, and I don't want sewage. I'd rather you take your money and your pump to put them in North Port St. Joe, where they need some help with sewage. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
My name's Randall Walker. I'm a resident on Palm Breeze Way, 186. I heard one of y'all ask a question up there a while ago, what about the people that want it? Who said that?
I did.
You did? Are you telling me they didn't know that we had septic tanks out there when they bought their property? It was accepted when they bought it. Why is it not accepted now?
It's accepted now, they just want it. These people want, they wanna get off this septic tank. I don't know why, sir, but they wanna get off this septic tank.
They don't want to accept the septic tank, that's what I'm saying. When they bought the property, they accepted the septic tank, or they had one put in, and someone granted a permit for it to be put there. So, that part don't even make sense. What about the people who want the city? So, that don't make any sense. How many people, were there out there now?
We have six customers that have paid to connect to the city.
So, they have priority over the people that don't run Palm Breeze Way? I would probably want it, but I figure my septic tank's good for 20 years. So, you gonna pay me my money back for my septic tank? I heard in a red, where we have to destroy our septic tank. We gotta pay for that. If you're gonna shove this down our throat, why don't you have to reimburse us for our septic tank?
Mr. Mayor, at this point, the city hasn't required anybody to demolish their septic. It's when their septic fails, sir. So, if it gets 20 years, great, if it gets 20 years.
Yeah, but then the tap fee changes, right? So, no matter when it fails, we still, and so the 500, it's like five or six thousand? Heard you say something like that.
That's correct. Currently, the fees, total fees amount to $6,000.
Okay, why can't we do this? Why can't every resident out there sign up for the tap fee for $500, and wait till the septic tank fails, while we tie into your system?
We have 15 grants, we have 15 available, but we have to have connection requirement through the grant for those connections. The grant requires that those that we sell connect within 90 days, I think, of activation of the line.
Basically, first come, first served, mayor of the city.
I don't know, either.
You're saying that you can't supply all the people on Palm Breeze Way?
Not through the grant.
So, if everybody signs up, somebody's gotta be left out.
It would be first come, first served, based on the grant dollars that are available.
Y'all have just overstated your boundaries, in case you don't know.
Way overstepped.
Every one of y'all has overstated your boundaries, and you're using your authority to shove this down our throat? And I can tell you where I'd like to put it.
Thank you, sir.
Come on up.
Hi, I'm Debbie Griswold. I'm a resident on Palm Breeze Way. First of all, but as I'm hearing people talk about Palm Breeze Way and the sewer coming down our road, I'm in full agreement, we don't want it. You know, for those who don't want it, I, my husband and I both, we do not want it. We're new residents to the street, to this community. We love it here. We really do. We, our lives have become much nicer since we moved here. But, from what everybody is saying about this line coming down, and that eventually, at some point, we're gonna have to tie into it, really is very unsettling to me, 'cause I'm also, not, I don't wanna get into anything, but financially, we cannot handle this right now. We can't even handle it in five years from now. We have a plan for our own lives, and this is not part of it. The way I see, how I'm trying to process this, there's parts of Jones Homestead that has been existing there for a very, very long time. Palm Breeze Way is not one of them. Palm Breeze is a newly developing street, that every year, we're getting three and four new houses popping up. Well, if that's the case, everybody who has purchased land, or even owns land on that street, is well aware that there has not been a sewer there, and is well aware that septic systems are required. Well, why can't you stop the sewer system on the older, or complete the sewer systems on the older houses, you know, on the other streets that are existing? Why do you have to come down Palm Breeze, where you've got all these, you know, new residents that are, some of them haven't even been in there a year, I don't think. I think, I mean, so why can't, I mean, like you said, help those who need it. We don't need it. We're fine. We don't need your sewer. All right? I mean, that's just where I'm coming from. I guess, go ahead, go down, you know, Cape Plantation. Maybe they want it. Maybe some of the other streets want it. I don't see how we do. They're not the ones that are developing. We're the ones developing. We've already invested eight, 10, $12,000. I don't wanna give it up. That was a lot of hard-earned money. Hard-earned money. This is ridiculous. Absolutely ridiculous. Wanna give us something, give us a freaking gas lawn. I don't wanna pay a sewer charge. I don't wanna pay a sewer bill every month. I've already, I mean, what's my water bill, or my sewer bill gonna jack up to? Based on my water usage, is it gonna be 40, 50, 60, 70 dollars extra a month for using your sewer? After I've spent thousands to destroy mine, my septic, which I've spent thousands to purchase? Doesn't make sense. Put the money somewhere else where it doesn't make sense. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I wanna say something, 'cause they have, they said something after I did. President Patrick again. He keeps spinning off, sir. No disrespect, but he keeps saying, nobody has said, nobody has said, 365, push this, push that. That's true. But if we wait till tomorrow, they talk about it, it's a day late. A day late, a dollar short. That's what we're trying to make. And I understand that per, the language, the verb is to use, that's how it works. You said that when they hook up, or sign up, with the grant, that they're cut in 90 days. Did you say that?
In the grant language, I believe that's correct.
Isn't that what you said?
That's correct.
If somebody wanna go, they're saying, I have no idea when it's gonna be coming. Well, it must be coming within 90 days if six people signed up, 'cause they got to be hooked up in 90 days. So, I'm looking for my ditch that they dug up in 90 days. I assume. If y'all borrow the grant guidelines, then whatever.
I guess they are working.
Because they're working. I know it's wet, but I guess they're slowing up, working this plantation.
Cape Plantation Drive is a far greater.
Don't blow me off on the 365. As far as statute, you can't do nothing better, except for the variance. But no one hasn't started, or Mr. Anderson not pushing it down the body's throat, that's regardless of the fact, it's still right there. I read all of it, just like you've written. I understand it too. Anyway, thanks again.
Thank you, sir.
One, I would like to say that on that statute, with the variance for the 365 days, according to the state attorney general, the statute makes no provision to the property owner to decline to connect to the system. So, we're completely at your mercy on that 365 day a year variance. We don't like that. That's one. The second thing, you asked, what about the six people who have signed up? Well, since I was the one that did the survey, I know each of those six people, and exactly why they signed up. One is a rental house, the only one on the street right now. One is a home that somebody came in repaired and is trying to flip. Nobody lives there. Out of the other four, one is afraid, by the language on the second letter that said they won't be able to repair their septic system in the future, and they thought, well, maybe I oughta just go ahead and sign up and try to get in cheaper right now, because they didn't know how well their septic system had been taken care of by a previous resident. One just plain said he liked sewer better. I'll admit that, he had had a bad experience with sewer, or with septic in the past, not on our street, in his former home. And one wants to put a swimming pool where a septic tank is. But that's it. I mean, nobody, though, went to the city and said, hey, we want sewer down our road. I don't know who started the whole grant. Maybe it was one of these other housing developments that did. But, out of these six people, those were the reasons given to me. But the main residents on the street, the full-time residents, they don't want the sewer, and they did not ask for the sewer.
Thank you, ma'am. Nick, yeah?
Mayor, Mr. Grantman is not here tonight. If you would like, I can go over a couple items. We did that, he did want to bring him tonight. The first is the grinder pump contract. The grinder pump contract is coming to an end. We would like to sit down with the city attorney, Mr. Albritton, and see about language on there to consider trying to stem it. Now, Mr. Grantman is happy with the current vendor on there, so we would like to be able to bring that back to you the next meeting, or some language for you to consider to extend the contract. The next item is, is of importance, the 16th Street Lift Station pump. He is down to, I think he's down to one pump, I believe, in Lift Station, and he feels that this is teetering on an emergency situation. He would like to be able to go ahead and make a purchase on that. If the board feels we need to bid it out, we will bid it out, but he does feel this is a necessity to get fixed. It's about $29,000. It is on page 189. $29,623. It is with our current vendor that we have, with pumping process that we mentioned earlier, but it is of urgent need that we make a repair.
We got the money.
We do have the budget. 16th Street, that's a major hub there for it, is along with 1st Street.
Do you have the budget, move to allow the purchase?
Second, Commissioner. Second. Second Commissioner Langston. All in favor, say aye? Aye. Question passes by, look.
Thank you, Mayor. The last item he wanted to mention, he is working on the bid specs for the fishing piers, so he's hoping to wrap it up and get that out the bid short.
That's it?
Yes, sir.
What's your plan?
If we went out and re-paved, re-powered the plant, our bid came in at $55, $550. We only got one bid. It's less than the last time we did it. I'd like to accept the bids and figure out how to move the money around, make this all happen, since we've been postponing for a while.
How much money?
It's $55, $550.
We got that money in the budget?
We had $50,000 budgeted, but he also had $25,000 budget for roof repair, and he's gonna just scale back that work to cover the $5,550 that he shored on this project.
All right, gentlemen, do you have a motion? So, move. Got a motion, Commissioner Langston, we have a second.
Second.
Second Commissioner Hawke. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Question carries by, look.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Money is the red. Oh, is that it?
That's it.
Working on July's financial statements. I had a conversation with one commissioner who asked if I'd just send him the copies of the monthly financials electronically. I didn't know whether if anybody else would prefer to receive an electronic copy, and then a hard copy. If you want a hard copy, that's fine, I can still put it in your box.
I like a hard copy.
Okay.
Electronic.
Okay. And as far as the budget, you all know, we had the meeting, and we did cancel our August 14th meeting. Our next budget meeting is scheduled for August 21st at noon, and we plan to go through the general fund, and overview of where we stand. And we will get that updated budget into boxes as well.
Guys, how do you feel about moving those meetings to City Hall? Well, Mike's close by his computer, if we have questions?
I don't have a problem with it. So, when we have a public.
Correct. Public meeting will be here.
Public meeting will be here. I don't have a problem with that.
Can we go ahead and move that location for the next two workshops up there?
That's fine. That's all I had, Mayor.
That is, John?
I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I did forget about that. We do, we are trying to actively pursue sewer connections on the Cape. And we have one such road, is Aruba Drive, and we have a row of about eight condos on that drive. Four customers have paid, prepaid the impact fee, the $2,856, to cover our construction costs to install a sewer line down Aruba, and they've agreed to connect. John is gonna do that work, and we'd like to get approval to move forward with the engineering for Aruba Drive, and the installation of that sewer line, as soon as he's completed, or can work it in with his current Jones Homestead project.
They paying all fees?
They are covering the operational costs for the fees, and they would be connecting, yes, sir.
So, Mr. Langston, both of you have a motion?
Yeah, the other one is, is even tied subdivision, and we'd like to move forward with the engineering on that, and then come back to you with a request for construction after we've nailed down the customers on even tide.
That was a little trickier. Number of customers, number of linear feet to be run, so we would like, Mr. Smallwood, look at that first, before we start putting pipe in the ground.
On even tide, so we can move on Aruba.
Installate, engineering and installation on Aruba, and then engineering on even tide. And we have that money available.
Hey, I'm curious, Mike, you may know the answer to this, you may not. Out of all the sewer lines that we have run outside of the city, which I heard we've gone White City, St. Joe Beach, and all, have we had any other street or small area where the residents of that street oppose the running of the sewer?
Not that I'm aware of. We haven't had much negative feedback. We certainly have customers that like their septic and wanna stay on it.
Right.
But we've always told them, as long as your septic's fine, we're not gonna require you to connect, and that's been our policy throughout the system. I receive calls weekly from Jones, from Beacon Hill, asking when sewer is going to be. calls weekly from Jones, from Beacon Hill asking when sewer is going to be installed in that Beacon Hill area. There's a lot of older homes in that Beacon Hill area.
Right. That's, I was kind of surprised to hear a difference of opinion on the availability of city sewer because the people that I have been contacted by, and I have friends at the, on Plantation, they were thrilled that the city's, or.
They got, they're, they're providing our street.
Yeah, I understand. It was just kind of a surprise. That's why I asked the question then, are there other areas in the entire area that we have supplied to complain or been opposed to running up the line?
Not, not as vigorously as Palm Breeze.
After I heard this tonight, I can tell you Beacon Hill's going to be one because I got a lot of friends. Thanks, Joey.
All right. Larry?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have anything on the agenda for tonight. If we have questions, I'll answer any questions you have.
Any questions, Larry?
All right, city, enter here.
You want me to, you want me to vote for it or not?
Yes, sir.
Or do we need a vote anyway? Or do we just move it on the rule?
They're below the, they're below our approval. We got to talk to this.
Yeah. I would draw. Let the staff move forward.
I don't have anything unless you have a question. So Reed Avenue, Sunday night. Thank you.
Sunday night?
He did a good job alone. He did a good job alone.
Hey, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Why have the striping not be put on Avenue A? The young's right.
Sure.
One of the first runs being paved. Now, I'm going to tell you what I was told, were always put on the back end. We got other streets we paved, they got striping. But the first street we paved, they're just about, don't have no striping yet. They're going to be right.
Talking about the section, Commissioner Quinn, did when the road retract.
Yeah, when the road retracts out?
Yes, sir. So after, after a road is paved, there's a minimum amount of cure time before they can put the thermoclassic striping on so it'll bond correctly. Obviously, there's a waiting period after that. Long Avenue doesn't have their final striping on it. So what the striping sub likes to do is to get enough to come in and spend the day stripping all the roads. That's not a reflection.
Where does it locate the road?
This is a matter of, you can certainly pay them another mobilization to come in and spend two hours and straight up Avenue A and go home. Or they can spend all day and stripe all your roads. So the plan with the striping, if you're fine with it, is get Reed Avenue done, let it be cured. And when you come in and get long, you get Reed, you get fault sale, you get Avenue G, you get Avenue A, maybe all the rest of them are striking on the go.
I just wanted to let you.
That's the answer. But that's not, certainly, if you want them here sooner, we can bring them sooner. That's just typically how it's going to let them come down. We do a day's worth. If you want a difference, let me know. We'll do a difference.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right. Please, Paul. Y'all have anything to talk about tonight? Ms. Charlotte?
No, sir.
Citizens to be heard. Anyone in all this, want to be heard? Come on up.
I'm sorry. I know everybody's tired.
It must have been a holiday.
I, I just didn't hear after you heard my neighbors and myself, any sort of resolution. Are you guys going to do a survey of our road? Are you going to not hook up the sewer if the majority do not want it? Do we go to our county commissioners next because we are county residents, not city residents? Some of my neighbors have been talking about class action lawsuits. I mean, what are you guys, you sat there and listened very nicely, but I didn't hear any action.
I don't know what we can do at this point. We're, we're within the grant. I don't, I don't know.
Was, is Palm Breeze Freezeway absolute in the grant? There's a lot of other places that need sewer.
Yeah, it was included in the grant.
Without asking, yes.
The city's already said money can be done at this point as part of the grant. The grant's been, money's, some of it's been spent anyway.
So you're going to ignore Palm Breeze Way? Is that what I'm hearing? There is absolutely no survey. We have no recourse according to you. We have no representation. Is that what I'm hearing? You're going to ignore us?
Would it be appropriate, Mr. Attorney, for us to, I don't know whether it'd be in a resolution or something to say to the effect that we are not requiring people to demolish septic tanks until there's a failure? I mean, I know the statute says that, but is there something that we can do to make that more clear? Because a future board could come and say, hey, I'm sending everyone a letter. And in a year, you're all hooking up. It could happen. But, you know, this board, I, I'm giving you my word that I won't do that. But who knows in the future? So is there something that we can do as a city to say that we're not going to require it until there's a failure?
Certainly, the board can come together on a resolution with that effect.
Does, does everybody understand that, and I'm not getting that vibe, does everybody understand that they're not going to be required to hook up in three, you said a year?
You're giving us a verbal word that you, that you, that you're granting us a variance. And that's all we've got. But actually, a lot of people don't. Even like, I mean, they, they want to repair their septic in the future, which you cannot give us a variance for.
Correct.
Would you be happy with a resolution from the current board that says we're not going to require you to hook up?
That will make some people happier, but there were several that spoke tonight that, that would not be happy with that. They don't want a sewer. And, I mean, who do I talk to next, the county? I mean, at least I have representation there. I have already talked to them at one meeting and they said that this is all Port St. Joe. They have nothing to do with it. They aren't on the grant. They didn't sign up for it. They, this is all you guys. And where do you have the authority from? I asked that in my letter, Mr. Attorney. Where does the city of Port St. Joe get the authority? Show me a statute because I've been looking for three days in the Florida statute that says that without any representation, without any asking, that the city of Port St. Joe can, in a non-city area, run a sewer line.
Ultimately, at this point, there's nothing the board can do that I'm aware of to undo. The grant request, my understanding, and Mr. Anderson, correct me if I'm wrong, but this particular area was a part of the grant request. The grant was approved. Funds have been expended. I, I don't know how this board can unring that bell at this point, even if all five members wanted to. I'm not aware of a met.
But under what statute and law can you?
They don't have the statute number, but I can certainly promise you that there is the authority under Florida statutes to do so.
I can't find it. So I would like that transmitted to me.
The bottom line, we'd have to pay the money back. I think that's, that would be the case.
I think you would have to go to the, to the grant authorities and say, we're going to do a different street with this amount of the money. I mean, you're talking six people that want it or that signed up for it. Not even all of them wanted it. You know? You didn't ask. You know, and if you have to give back the money, that's not our problem. It's yours. Because you didn't ask. Just like you didn't ask 10th Street. You know? And, and, you know, people are pissed. We don't have representation. You cannot do stuff without any representation. We're county residents. We are not city residents. So where does the authority come from? Again, I'm asking the, where does the authority come from? I asked that in my letter when I sent the agenda in. Because if you can't give me a statute or law that says you have the authority, you can't do it. Whether you have a grant or not. You're just going to have to write to the grant board and say, we're going to pick a different street. Because there are lots of streets that want it.
I would think we have the right to offer sewer to anyone that might would want it.
Nobody requested it. Not one soul requested it. Now, we signed up after we were threatened with, oh, by the way, if it breaks, you're not going to get to fix it. And, you know, some of us did look up the statute before tonight and, oh, 365 days, I'm going to have to sign it. Unless they decide to give me a variance. You know? I'm just saying, I want to know where the authority comes from. And what I would like is, a survey done. And if the majority of the residents say no, you don't want it. I mean, I don't want you to just say, oh, we listened to all these people gripe and too bad, so sad. You know? This is money. This is people's lives. You know? So I, I will expect at the next meeting that I be told what law you do this under.
We'll find out what authority we have to do this by conference next meeting. It's got to be authority somewhere on it. We'll put it all over the county. That's what I said. All over the county.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not telling you there might be. I'm telling you there is. I don't have a statute number for you about it today.
Right.
The authority is there for the city to take the action. I think we have.
Without county approval?
Again, I've stated my opinion.
Okay. All right. I'll peel the floor. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Get a later. Get a honey, Mike. Get a.
My, my, very, very quick, very quick. Number one, we, we have sewer on North Port St. Joe side. We don't need no more sewer. We just need to set a board.
You just needed to prove.
Yes, we, we okay. I didn't know whether that was.
I didn't know it. I was trying to figure it out now.
I wanted you to address the fact that the 10th Street above, I don't know the settlement on it, but I pray that when you guys do go ahead and make your final move on it, that you will include some of North Port St. Joe areas for, for practice or whatever. So we can use those fields over there because it's too confused or made out of them. One that we have over there. But, you know, in your, in the process of you doing something, just include that as a, yeah, a way out. The, the other thing is that you brought up about the, the trial farm. One of the things that we went for, we initiated some, some projects and the application. We have the groundwork and the contacts with the fellow who, Harper. He's the actual guy who signs the, the actual agreement in order to fulfill your application. Now, but the reason I'm saying that is that we actually have the experience and we've talked with them. We know now pretty much what we have to do. One of the things that went wrong was we were asked to ask the county to agree with us with our program. And that would have helped us out and the county refused to do that. They said they was only going to do one program. Well, since then, we have went back and we talked with Mr. Harper. We talked with this young lady that worked with him. And they told us, you know, the very things that we need to do. And I'm thinking that if we can partner with the city rather than the city actually looking for something with us, but we already got certain plans, then we can hook with the city and help them with that application because we now know how to do the application. The only thing we're waiting on right now is for the cities to approve the, the growth in, on the foundation. Once that is done, then we will reapply. But I'm saying that they're asking for us to partner with other people in order to get it done. I don't know why the county didn't agree to just do more than one just in case. But they all want to do just that one. So I'm saying for us, the city and the pack and whatever else that we want to do, the more you put in, I think the better our chance you'll get one or two. It's a matter of us just putting them in and not really saying, somebody said, we only want one. Let's put in as many as we possibly can. We know some people. John Himmel was very good at putting in our grant. He knows now exactly who to contact, how to contact and what they're looking for. And I'm saying, let us not overlook what we already have in front.
Thank you, sir. All right. Mistress, talk with you, Mr. Langston. You have anything?
Yes, sir. I'm good. All right. Fortunately, I have one thing, mayor.
Go ahead.
At our meeting earlier today, it was brought up that there is a, an issue with a sidewalk right on the side of Sisters. That's all, I guess Bill said he's seen several people fall and take a tumble on that step. If we could look, he thinks that it might have been undermined by the irrigation lines when they turned it on to see if they could irrigate. And he thinks that it may have washed away underneath. If we could cut that out and take a look, it's pretty bad. That's all I have.
That's it? All right. Mr. Hall?
One short thing. There is a, I guess we call it a pothole that has started at 20th and it's not 19th. What is it? Palm, 20th and Palm. And for some reason, my truck runs over it every single time. What I'm thinking, okay, they'll hit it this time. But it's getting worse. So if someone would go by and look at that. There is like a little water cover or manhole cover there. So I'm wondering if we got a busted pipe or something. But it's noticeable and getting worse.
20th and Palm?
I think it's where that Brian.
Yeah, that's Brian's house?
Yeah. It's right there in that intersection.
And I don't have a thing, but I want to turn.